All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our budget hearings here on June 24th. We're going to call this meeting to order here at 9:00 a.m. And we'll start off with customary moment of silence. And I know we have a couple today.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and start. I don't have a specific date, but I believe it was about two weeks ago. A gentleman by the name of Rick Rice, a well-known veteran in the area of Lake County, who was part of the United Veteran Council of Lake County. I believe that's the name of the team he was a part of. Rick Rice, I met him probably 15 years ago when I first came to Lake County. Was already involved in helping to shuttle people to San Francisco for their VA appointments. Was dedicating to continuing to serve by serving his fellow colleagues, brothers and sisters from the military. If you recognize the new addition next to the Veteran Museum in Lakeport, there is now Frick Hall. Part of the word Frick comes from Frank and Rick, from Rick Rice. Both Frank and Rick were, in my opinion, always together. You would never see one without the other. Unfortunately, Frank passed as well, and now Rick has joined Frank. And Frank should definitely be somebody that we strive to be and somebody that we should remember as he did quite a lot for a lot of people here in this community.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Dr. Donald Browning, who died on June 10th after a brief illness. He was almost 93 years old. He moved to Lakeport at the age of three and later attended Lakeport Schools through high school. He went on to attend college at Oregon State University, UC Berkeley, and the Medical School at UC San Francisco. During college, he married his wife Louise after she earned her registered nursing degree. And after medical school, he served as a physician in the U.S. Army for three years before moving on to county hospitals in Santa Clara and Contra Costa Counties. He returned to Lakeport in 1961 and began a general practice. Dr. Browning served the medical community for over 40 years. He helped establish Sutter Lakeside Hospital. His very busy practice involved delivering babies, covering the emergency room on weekends, and making house calls. He volunteered as a Clear Lake High School team doctor and provided sports physicals. He was deeply involved in the community, serving on the Lakeport Unified School Board, the Lakeport Community Bank Charter Board, the Rotary Club, and United Christian Parish. He was a humble man and a pillar of our community and will be greatly missed. There will be services for him at the Soper Reef Theater on Sunday, July 6th, at 1:00 p.m. with a reception following at United Christian Parish. Secondly, I wanted to remember the life of firefighter Matthew Black of Lakeport. Yesterday was the 26-year anniversary of his death. He was electrocuted while fighting a fire in North Lakeport that had power lines down at 20 years old. And I just want to make sure that we never forget his service and sacrifice to our community. Thank you.
Vice Chair Rasmussen, can you lead us in the bridge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that and for the moments of silence. All right, next, we're going to go to our 4.2 addendum item. And that is addendum to ratified the June 17th, 2025 appointment of Susan Parker and Lars Ewing as interim public works directors. I know that there's any action to be taken on this? Go from there. Yes, please.
So, good morning, members of the board. Lloyd Yintivano County Council. So, the recommended action here would be to just ratify your board's June 17th, 2025 appointment of Susan Parker and Lars Ewing as interim public works directors. Your board may want to take a public comment prior to taking that action, though, and it'll be by motion.
All right, thank you. I will open it up to the public at this time if there's anyone that would like to comment or question on this item. All right, I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we ratify the June 17th, 2025 appointment of Susan Parker and Lars Ewing as interim public works directors.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we will move on to 4.1, our public hearing, consideration of recommended budget for fiscal year 2025 and '26 for County of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. I will give the floor to our CAO, Susan Parker.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Supervisor Susan Parker, County Administrative Officer. It is an honor to present the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 recommended budget for the County of Lake and special districts governed by your board. Developing a structurally balanced and responsible budget in compliance with the Budget, County Budget Act requires significant collaboration. We are very fortunate to have a highly dedicated group of department heads and staff committed to serving the public by preserving the fiscal health of our county. Thank you all who contributed to the creation of this budget. Thank you also to department heads... Department heads and teams for being part of these budget hearings, providing for transparency and understanding surrounding county agencies' financial decision-making. Now, I will turn this presentation over to Casey Moreno, Deputy County Administrative Officer, who will provide a high-level summary of the recommended budget. Her overview will then be followed by the department presentations, beginning with the Department of Social Services. Thank you, board.
Good morning. Casey Moreno, Deputy County Administrative Officer. Thank you. So, our budget priorities are to maintain a structurally balanced budget, preserve the general reserves, avoid reduction in service levels, avoid layoffs, furloughs, and benefit reduction, and to serve the public through efficient use of taxpayer dollars. Next slide. So, an overview of the county budget. General fund went up, down by a couple million. Special revenue funds include Department of Social Services, Health, Behavioral Health, various sheriff and other specialty budgets. Capital project funds include Lamson Capital Projects, RDA Housing Successor Agency, Public Safety Facilities, Geysers Geothermal, and Capital Projects. The debt service funds are at zero, and that is due to the funds being held by U.S. Bank. And the project is budgeted in the Public Safety Facilities budget, which is in the Capital Projects funds. The internal service funds include various central garage and fleet budgets and employee and county insurance funds. The enterprise funds is solid waste. And then special districts and others include special district, water resources, air quality, and various like teen districts. Next slide. So here's a visual representation of the funds from the prior slide. So you'll notice that the colors do match up on each side, and that is because it's a perfectly balanced budget. The revenue and FBA, or fund balance available, matches the appropriations and reserve adjustments. Next slide. So this is all the revenues for the county budget which is presented today. So over half of the county's revenues come from the state, with about a sixth coming from taxes and another six from federal funding. For the taxes, the majority of that is for general fund. Next slide, please. So this is all the appropriations which is presented in the budget. So the county appropriations are largely focused on services and supplies, followed by salary and benefits. Next slide, please. So the general fund revenues are largely made up by taxes, which include property taxes and sales tax. I will go into more detail on further slides for the taxes. And then it's followed by about a quarter of the revenues come from state. Next slide, please. So the general fund appropriations, over half are the salary and benefits for staff, followed by about a third for services and supplies. Next slide, please. So general funds, net county cost. So the net county cost, or NCC, is the amount of discretionary and non-discretionary funds which are allocated to general fund departments. The carryover or fund balance available is something we talk about a lot in final budget, and these are the unspent funds from the prior fiscal year. For non-general fund departments, this is included in their budget for this year. For general fund departments, they do not have carryover that they can automatically put into their budget. If a department does need carryover, they'll ask for it as an extraordinary request. So the net county cost was decreased this year due to an awareness of economic uncertainty as well as it's intended to cover just ongoing expenses, not one-time costs. So departments have requested one-time funding requests. There's about 5 million which are included in the budget presented. The remaining carryover or FBA will be allocated at final budget. Next slide. So this is the general fund, which is the approved versus what was actually used. So you'll notice that the amount that was actually used is a lot lower than what was approved. So some of this can be attributed to vacant positions. And so that is carried over, whatever is not spent is carried over to the next year. Next slide. So the next two slides are position allocation changes for general funds since the adopted budget. So a lot of these positions were already previously approved by either a separate agenda item or during mid-year, but they are changes since the adopted budget, so they are included here. Next slide. And here are the remaining positions that have changed. Next slide. So one of the ways that general fund will be affording the salary increases as a result of the MOUs is by removing positions. So huge thank you to the departments for their willingness to give up a position to help us be able to afford these increases. So the departments that gave up a position is the Otter Controller, Assessor, Information Technology, District Attorney, Sheriff, Probation, and Planning. Next slide. So when we talk about funding positions, it's always a question, can we afford it? So for all positions in the entire county, it's 127.8 million approximately, and that is for all county departments. For just general fund, it's about 54.8 million, plus the budgeted overtime, cash outs, and extra help positions. Adding in the expenses of 41 million brings us to the budget presented of 99 million. So with just the amount that we're expecting to bring in as revenue is 88 million, and then the difference is the carryover. Next slide. So we are doing a lot better with vacancies. So, we are doing a lot better with vacancies. Part of that is from removing vacant positions, and a part of it is just a little more aggressive hiring practices. And so, the vacancies for general fund is currently at 13.6%, and for the non-general fund is at 16.5% vacant. Next slide. So, secured property tax. So, this is one of the main revenues that come in for general fund. What I have up here is the budgeted amount for '24, '25, as well as the requested amount for '25, '26. Other than that, those are the actuals for the prior years. You can see that is continuing to climb. Next slide. So, for the property taxes, every dollar that is paid for property taxes, where does it go? Well, 26.45% goes to the county for the general fund, or not just general fund. Fire gets 7.58%, districts get 6.15%, cities get 2.27%, and schools get the largest portion at 57.55%. Next slide. So, of the 26.45%, general fund gets 23.8%, library gets 1.22%, roads gets 1.19%, and water gets 0.96%. These amounts do change a little bit each year, but are typically pretty close to the same amount. Next slide. So, for cannabis taxes, so, this year, we did budget 1.565 million. However, we've actually received closer to 3.4 so far. We are not sure if that is going to continue next year, so we are budgeting a little conservatively at 2.6. The reason for that is there was the change that your board approved a year or so ago that they cannot opt out after a certain point. They have a deadline, and that cannot move, as well as they can't do a reduction. So, looking at next year, it's possible that it'll continue to increase, but it's also possible that people will get those opt-outs in on time and not be able to, to change that after the fact.
Question?
Yes.
So, of this amount collected, how much of it is the cannabis equity grant? Because I know in the past, a lot of that was used to supplement the taxes.
So, the cannabis equity grant had paid for their taxes, so the individuals did not have to pay it. This year, I believe it was about 400,000. I'll have to look back, but about 400,000, I believe, of it was cannabis equity grant.
And that's the end of it?
And it's done, yeah.
Okay, so, we're, we're looking at a little bit more sustainable than what we saw last year?
Yeah, okay. Next slide. So, how are the cannabis tax revenues allocated? So, with all of the revenues, including the penalties, the first 500,000 goes to the board's discretionary funds, and then the remaining balance is split up, 30% to planning, code enforcement, water resources, environmental health, 30% to law enforcement, 30% to economic development and housing risk reduction, and 10% to youth programs. Next slide. So, this is the board's discretionary funds, and the balance is as of right now, without the additional 100,000 that will be allocated with this budget. So, this is where each district stands, and this does include pledged funds. This is what's actually in the accounts right now.
As of July 1st, or as of now?
This is what it is as of now. July 1st, you'll get another 100.
I'll take it.
So, the sales tax, so, we are estimating that it will come in a little bit higher, so we may adjust the '25, '26 a little bit in final. So far this year, we've brought in 8.1 million, which is above what we had initially estimated of 7,775,000. So, sales tax is starting to climb back up a little bit, but we're not going to be too aggressive with that. Next slide. So, transient occupancy tax. We did estimate that it's going to be about a million next year. However, with the tax collector going after some of those renters that have not been filing transient occupancy tax, it may go up, but we would adjust that later on. Next slide. So, an overview of the general fund contingencies and reserves. Pretty much everything is staying the same, with the exception of the Technology Modernization Reserve. So, you'll see the negative 2 million, so that is because 4 million is budgeted to go to the Otter Controller's Office for the workday conversion, and then 2 million should be coming back in from Behavioral Health.
You have a question, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I do have a question. This is, I guess, a question from Ms. Moreno and a question for the board. I feel like there's a pretty large number that's missing from this, and it is, in my opinion, general fund, is the reserves for cannabis program, because cannabis is a general tax that we can decide to use however we please, and there's $9.3 million in there, and I think that should be highlighted. I also would like to request to the board, because it's not highlighted, and it kind of, in my opinion, I don't mean to put it in a negative way, but it's kind of hidden where people don't see it, and we have a salary stabilization fund within cannabis, and I think that should probably be moved to budget stabilization rather than kept aside. If we want to keep that amount, I think it needs to be very public and very known, and put in our budget stabilization reserve, so that people can see it anytime they look at it. Because right now, you got to ask, what's in cannabis? What's this mean? And, and right now, it's, again, it's not being highlighted here, because we seem to have separated it away from our normal reserves, even though we call it a salary stabilization reserve. So, I would like for consensus, if that's possible, from the board to move that to make it a little bit more transparent that that money is there. I believe it's 5.2 million dollars, or something like that, if I'm correct.
For which part? The stabilization, the budget stabilization, or the salary?
The salary stabilization, and within the cannabis program.
Let me double check. So, currently, there is 5.9 million.
5.9.
Yeah, I have a question. Are these reserves, we're not showing the interest on these amounts?
Correct. The interest goes to the budget unit, which is general fund, so it goes to 1120.
Okay.
And, did you want consensus now, or towards the end?
If it's possible now, to see if that's something we can bring back for the final budget, to move that, to make it more transparent.
Is there a reason we wouldn't?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Do you have it?
I'm fine with moving it.
Thank you.
It's there. All right.
Okay, next slide. So, there are multiple capital projects. A few of the highlights are the armory remodel, so we have budgeted just over 15 million for that. There are various roads, bridges, and sidewalks, curbs, 24 million. Library improvements at 1.5 million, and various special districts projects. Next slide. So, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. So, the cutoff for moving around funds to different projects was on December 31 of 2024. So, these projects were all completed by that date, so about 5.5 million were completed. Next slide. And these are the remaining projects that are still ongoing. So, the funding will be wrapped up for a few of them here soon, but as of the last claiming cycle, this is the status of each of them. These are all under contract and scheduled to be completed by the deadline of December 31, 2026.
I have a, I have a quick question on the capital assets, the capital projects.
Yeah.
I know last year, we made a special request, and it did come back to us. I couldn't find it within our agendas, but I know we asked for timelines. How long has this project been on here? Because we have money allocated to it, and it's sitting there. A, a good example is the South Main Water Program for 2 million dollars that has been set aside for probably over a decade. I don't see timelines included in this version. It was asked for last year. Are we getting a timeline for final budget? Are we getting another special agenda? It would be nice, every single time we got a capital asset list, to know, is it, because I, I'm having to go back and forth. Is this a new project, or is this the same project? Are we accumulating, accumulating funds, or are we depleting funds? It's hard for me to understand where things are and where we're going, or if things are on hold, and we need to discuss if that project's even still a viable project.
With your board's permission, if we could bring that back at final, that way we can ask the department heads for the timelines, we can definitely bring that.
Please.
All right, so, anticipated needs from the general fund. So, the new courthouse, so the state currently owns the fourth floor, so we will need to start saving for that to purchase it and then renovate it. The compensation study implementation will start on July 1st. So, any increases to salaries have not been included in the budget, so we're going to be working with departments to ensure that their funds are available for that. And then, the Board of Supervisors chambers and first-floor bathrooms remodel, that will be coming soon. Next slide.
I just wanted to throw something out there real quick. We did an exchange of a property for the armory. Is it a possibility of looking at any property that the county owns, do an exchange for the fourth floor, so we don't have to dish out any dollars for the fourth floor? And maybe we can work with the state on a housing project, similarly to what's happening on 18th and Phillips. Just putting it out there to see if we can reduce the potential cost of the fourth floor, and also get some housing, since that seems to be what the state would like to do, if we have the available property to do so.
Yes, we can look into that. The agreement was drafted quite a while ago. I can work with Lars, and we can come back to see if that's even an option for us.
All right, so that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Supervisor Pisca.
Can you go back to the cannabis slides? Yeah, we can start with this one, just noticing how much the revenue's dropped from the time, and then go to the next one. Perfect. I, I think we need to reconsider the 500,000 that's allocated to the board, and when we were at 8 million, maybe that made sense, but I propose that we cut that in half, and I think 50,000 each is more than adequate for our projects, given the reduction in revenue over the years. And, one of the things that I'd like to propose is we have 10% for youth programs. Those are for the library, but one of the things that we're trying to expand right now is our recreation program, because we've not had much recreation in this county. We've had clogging over the years, and I know our Public Services Director has been looking at expanding. Last summer, we had summer camps for the first time. I think this is something that the people of our county could really benefit from, youth, seniors, all kinds of programming. I think taking $250,000 from this, from the board, to public services, to invest in recreation program would be a lot more beneficial. We, we see, can you go to the next slide? How much money is just sitting there? There's a lot there, and I think, I think we can still do what we need to do with a smaller amount, and it's much more responsible for the benefit of all of our residents to consider this.
Supervisor Sabatier?
If we didn't have a 9.3 million dollar reserve in that specific category, I would say, let's have that conversation. I think that's what the reserves should be for. Only some of that is reserved specifically for what we've asked for. The rest, I haven't seen a request. I would make requests before we start cutting anything else out.
Well, reserves are one time, this is ongoing, given that we continue to have ongoing revenue in cannabis, but, you know, those reserves are set aside to be reserves, and for projects, for capital projects, and for park projects. And this is a time that we shouldn't be dipping into the reserves, and we need to hold strong on all of our reserves, but we have all this available revenue coming in each year that we really need to be investing in our people.
Go ahead.
I think that a lot of these, the monies for these projects, they are investing in the people, in all honesty, as far as pet projects for the people. And prior to actually this coming up, I just asked Bruno, just what are you saving for? And he said a skate park for the kids.
I, I'm aware of it.
I think that that's pretty worthy.
That's $600,000 that's been sitting there. This is going to be year six.
Oh.
Yeah. So, I mean, I just, I want to, I know this is potentially controversial, but I don't feel right taking this much money. Can we go back and show what the proportion is that goes to the board, rather than to programs? Go back to the, yeah. Yes. We take half a million right off the top.
And those discretionary funds can go directly to those. You have the right to put them into those programs.
We do, and I will.
That's all I'm saying.
The other thing that I'd like to consider besides programming, recreation programming, is investing in our internship program, which Vice Chair Rasmussen donated, did you put 25,000?
It ended up being a little under 20 with the final cost.
So, yeah, we had, this year, because of that, we had internship positions for museum, HR, admin, and library. For museum, we had 31 applicants. For HR and admin, we had 38 applicants, and for the library, we had 43. This is where we can expand services for our youth that want to intern with the county, that want to know more about our government and, and contribute as public servants. So, you know, I will cut mine in half, and I, I just would encourage the rest of the board to think about this, because this is a lot of money to just be sitting there at the will of one supervisor, and we can really invest this in our people, and our youth, our seniors, and our students, and start to see some big differences.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm gonna move on from that topic. Appreciate the, the request.
Well, I want to hear from other people.
Part of, part of why I disagree, and I think it's written in, maybe it's the next portion of this presentation, so I don't want to steal your thunder, but we do not spend the money that is available for us to spend very much every year. I have a bid out right now for the skate park, so my money's about to disappear entirely. But if there's a reason to have it, there's a reason to have it, but there's other monies available. I don't think people voted for Measure K, I think it was, no, Measure C, K was for the other one, for us to hold 9.3 million dollars in reserves. That was our choice of how we decided to do things. But again, there's a million dollars in one of those buckets, there's 300,000 dollars in the other bucket, it's not like they're empty, and I think that I have yet to see requests coming through. So, I, I would prefer seeing requests and seeing how we can move around what's within the buckets than make some of those changes. Open for the discussion. And I guess I'll, I'll wait for my other comments regarding the presentation, to see if anyone else wants to speak to that before I change the topic.
Vice Chair?
What is the, the 10% for youth programs amount to, dollar-wise? Do we know?
It changes each year, depending on how much, excuse me, how much cannabis tax comes in. So, the first 500,000, that is set to come off, and then it's split between the four buckets.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm open to thinking about it more. I'm not ready to make a decision on that today, but I do think that, you know, the youth programs are one of our most important things. But I do think that, you know, the youth programs are one of our most important things that we have going on. And that's why I, you know, have put some of my initial money towards the internship program to make those programs available. So I'm open to thinking through it more. I just want to put a little more thought in it. I wouldn't want to make that decision right now.
I'm just thinking for me, I've got some projects that I would like to do in my district, which is for our youth, for our kids. As we, as what I believe that these, these funds are for, for the pet projects in our own districts. So for now, I haven't spent any money. I've got some allocated out where I've promised it to the museums, to, to other areas. But I'm looking forward to being able to do something within our district that is meaningful in the Lower Lake, in the Middle Town and, and those areas.
Well, I know I've pledged mine to specific initiatives. Like one is the, the cameras, the license plate readers. That's an ongoing cost. I, you know, I give to the Lucerne Senior Center and the Live Oak Senior Center and Upper Lake Senior Center for Resiliency. And I've even given to a couple of projects that other colleagues have asked me to contribute to. For me, I mean, when it comes to youth programs, I'm, I'm okay when it comes to internships. I understand that. I want our kids to thrive and if they're interested. But when it comes to recreation, most of the time we're talking Lakeport or Clear Lake. And not too many from my district are going to benefit from that. I've said that before and I'll keep saying it. As much as I want them to, I know that there's going to be a struggle for them to get to these. The only ones that are going to be able to make it are affluent families. And so many of the other children aren't going to have the opportunity to benefit from those.
Well, I wasn't thinking about the rec agency. I was thinking about our Public Services Director. And he's, there's a request for bringing on a staff member to develop programs for our youth all around the county.
I'd like to see the plan first because what happens is we talk about that. I give to it, I succeed, you know, I succeed to it. Then it ends up being Lakeport and Clear Lake. So, or, or District 5. And then District 3 is left out.
And 2. Well, we can talk about it more. And I think that maybe that discussion can come up when Public Services has their presentation. But I have felt like it's board heavy on this for a long time. And I'm glad we're having this conversation. I still think that this is too much for us to be taking off the top every year. And I hope we can get to a point where we're looking at funding some other things. And I'm glad that you're open to having that conversation.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabati.
So just some of my comments. I mean, right now it says that the budget is balanced. You did talk about at the end that there's some incoming issues, which we just approved over $5 million in change of salaries. So in a way, it won't be balanced as of July 1st when we start paying off based off, off those salaries. We'll have to make some adjustments. So we're already kind of 5 million in the hole in the sense of how the budget looks today, knowing that we approved those MOUs. If that's the case, that means that we are pulling about $82 million out of reserves. We have $135 million in reserves. That's a huge chunk in order to balance that. And that just goes back to, I know you're going to be saying that we have been spending very much below what we say we're going to spend. And so to me, it's, it's, we have to figure out a way to tighten our budgets to be more realistic. I think our budgets are very fluffed, which if they were more realistic, a little tighter, then there would be more money to be able to move around and work with some of the programs that we're talking about right here. Also, positions taken out. I know you mentioned you took out nine. Our fault over here, but we need to do a better job because we're still seeing an increase of about 14 or 15 positions compared to last year. And with the increase that we just did, that is not sustainable in the long run. And I think that we need to have a harsh discussion about what the vacancy looks like and how we reduce that vacancy. Not lay people off, but how to reduce the position allocation to be realistic, especially after signing a four-year contract with our unions. And so I think that we, we need to have a deeper dive discussion about position allocations. Some are going to be of value to add and some are going to be of value to get rid of. Again, not layoff, just vacant allocated positions that still are there and that hold money within our appropriations of our salaries that I think traps, especially in the general fund, general fund dollars that could be used to serve the public in better ways. And that's been something I've been seeing again and again in our, our budgets, that we have these positions, but we don't even fly them sometimes. And I just think that that's money trapped and money lost that we can be spending on the people in providing services or providing physical things in our community like parks or whatever else might be. So I, I think we need that deeper dive and I hope that we will have that deeper dive. This has been a discussion about reducing the number of position allocations that we have and nine is not enough.
So on the reserve adjustments, I show an adjustment of 9.5 million.
I looked at your reserve fund summary and it says we have 135 million. And then overall, if we're spending $418 million with the revenues showing 341 million, then we got to get the money from somewhere. And I'm not seeing the fund carry balance for every single one of them. Because that's not necessarily specifically identified in each budget sheet. But when I see we're getting 341 million and we're spending 418 million, I, I start getting concerned that that's how we do our budget. And the only way to balance it is to make sure that we have the reserves to cover it or the carryover balance.
I'm still not seeing the reserves that you are. Is it on the, on C5?
As far as what money you're using to balance it out, I, I don't have the specifics. But what I do have is you have a fund, a fund summary of the reserves and it totals 135 million dollars.
Steven.
Steven Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. The 86 million is FBA fund balance available, so it's what you guys would call carryover. There's only, and if you look at the fund summary, you can follow down the spreadsheet. The reserve adjustment's only about 9 million. So 86 of it is carryover slash FBA from the prior year. And there's a lot of large departments like Social Services that are front loaded in June for the first quarter in the next year. So it's not necessarily apples to apples, like, oh, we just have a big pot.
Now, everybody is different because of where their funding comes from. But again, that number you just stated as a carryover is a rather large number.
I heard a microphone. Okay. Alright, any other? And so we, if there's no other questions, I'm going to open it up to the public. Lloyd, okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this presentation for this initial budget discussion?
Michael Wagner, citizen of Lake County. Board, thank you guys so much for being here. And wow, a lot of stuff on your plate right now. I think that bringing up the points that you guys have, I think is really important because you're taking on issues that are contentious. And while it will be friction, because everybody has the things that they're trying to take care of, I think it's important that we disagree so that we can find some kind of understanding between it. So all that taken into account, Ms. Pyska has a very good point. I think about the percentages based on that $500,000 allotment. And I think Bruno has a good point about how these funds move and where things get locked up. With that, I just wanted to point out the original numbers from 2017 and that 8 million approximate number turns into about 6.5% on that 500,000 that goes to the board. And this year at the 2.6 million minus the 500,000, that's about 24%. So if you just looked at the ratios there, Ms. Pyska I think has a point. And I think Bruno has some very specific points about the technicalities that happen when you move and shift funds. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Alright, I'll bring it back to the board and I'll circle back to the discussion because I can get a chance to add a couple of things when it comes to that discussion. I don't mind having the discussion that you mentioned. I'm just looking at the percentages when it comes to cannabis tax revenues. And then it shows the discretionary fund, 30%, 30%, 30%, 10%. You know, if, if I see more of what's in those 30% happening, I know we had the can grants at one time. I wrote that down when we were talking. And a lot of those were pledged but not used. So I think in that capacity, if we can ensure some of that's used towards some of the things I know that, that we're implementing to. For example, I know we started out the seed project for the Hogback Ridge Crew, which is for the whole county when it comes to the fuels crew. So things like that. If, if there's more of those happening, I'm willing, you know, especially when it comes to internships. You know, I think that's important. It's one of the things I looked at when I first got on because we don't have any staff or anything like that. Sometimes there's positions that people could use. I know I've talked to different department heads that asked if, if there's somebody that's intern, that interns with the department from college or whatever, that's looking to be engineer or whatever they're looking towards in that field. I think that would be a big plus. And I, and I really appreciate you bringing that forward as well, Vice Chair, because that, that will keep people wanting to come back here and whatnot. So I want to invest in things like that. So I have no problem having the discussion. I want to make sure that things are, you know, laid out when it comes to, you know, equitable distribution. You know, that's the main thing. Supervisor Sabati.
Yeah, I just had one comment. How come we don't show the debt service? I know you said zero with an asterisk. It's part of US Bank. But why is it not being discussed within the budget that we owe $15 million from a loan that we took just to at least give us an idea of where we are with that? I know we get quarterly reports, but why does it have to be separated out of the budget?
So those funds are not currently in the county budget. And so that's why it's separate. It's held by US Bank and then we draw it down as needed. I could definitely bring in a slide that has the breakdown because we make semi-annual payments.
I, I just think it's such a large number and it's something we're committed to, to pay off over the years, that I think it should at least be brought to our attention how much is still owed so that as we make decisions that has future impact on our general fund, which is what's paying that back, that we, we have that in mind during this conversation. That's, that's my only request. Not to blend it into the budget, but to at least bring the numbers.
When I'm presenting our administration's budgets, I can definitely bring a slide for that. We can discuss.
If there's not anything else, we can conclude this portion of it. We do need to vote on accepting? Or we just move on? Yeah. We're good? I'm just making sure. I move forward sometimes and you're like, hey, you didn't vote. Alright. Let's move on to the next portion, which is our Social Services.
Yes, so we have Social Services with Director Rachel Domon-Parson, starting on page D242.
Good morning, Chair Crandall and Supervisors. Thank you for having us here today to present Social Services budget. With me today is Kelly Page. She is our Deputy Director over Administration. And she will go through each of our budget units with some remarks.
Good morning, I'm Kelly Page. I'm the Administrative Deputy for the Department of Social Services. Before I jump into all of our budget units, and we do have quite a few, I just want to thank our DSS accounting team, Carrie, Nicole, Diana, Tracy and Jack. They have been so helpful throughout this process and we honestly could not do it without them. I also want to thank the Admin Office for all their support. Casey and Stephen, you've been great as always. And without any further ado, I will jump in. We do have Nicole, our supervising accountant on standby in the Zoom room if there are any deeper questions than we may have prepared for here. And jumping right in with our first budget unit at DSS 5011. This is our Social Services Administration budget. This is the budget that provides staffing, services and supplies necessary to carry out our departmental functions. In addition to admin expenses, there are also program expenses included here such as CalFresh, Medi-Cal, CalWorks, Welfare to Work, supportive services and childcare, adult protective services, public guardian, public administrator and our direct child welfare services. This budget also includes IHSS public authority contract costs. Our next budget unit is 5012. This is our Special Programs budget. This budget is comprised of staff assigned to the public authority and to the Area Agency on Aging. 5121 is our General Welfare budget. This is the budget unit that provides assistance payments to families through CalWorks. It also funds direct payments to resource families and to facilities for children who have been removed from their home due to abuse and/or neglect. This budget unit also funds the county share of payroll costs for IHSS providers who assist older adults and those with disabilities so they can remain safely in their homes. Budget Unit 5125 is our Wraparound Services budget. This budget is where we deposit CWS wraparound reinvestment funds that have been collected. These funds are used to cover specific services by child welfare as determined by our director. 5164 is our Housing Administration. This budget unit includes operation of the Housing Choice voucher program, otherwise known as Section 8. And it also covers staffing and support for our other housing budget units, 5165 and 5169. Budget Unit 5165 is our Home Program Income Housing Services. This budget unit consists of loan payment proceeds from first-time homebuyer and owner occupied rehab loans that we have issued from home grants we've received in previous years. Next, 5168, Senior Citizen Program. This budget unit assists in supporting our local senior centers and provides Lake County's matching funds to the Area Agency on Aging of Lake and Mendocino Counties. 5169 is the budget unit where we would deposit any home new grants. And this is subject to the availability of grant funds. The program provides first-time homebuyer and owner occupied rehabilitation loans to qualified low-income households in just unincorporated areas of Lake County. 5281 is our General Relief budget. This budget unit is the General Relief Program Assistance Payments. And finally, we have 5282 for IHSS Public Authority Administration. The IHSS Public Authority maintains a registry of screen providers and offers training to providers and recipients. The PA contracts with Social Services, Budget Unit 5012 for staffing and with Budget Unit 5011 for operations. And just a few comments on the budget this year. Position changes. We did not change our overall number of positions. If you combine all of our budget units, we're remaining the same. We did take one FTE from 5164, moved it to 5011. And our capital asset request for this year, we do have in there a $20,000 earmarked amount for a lobby kiosk at our main Anderson Ranch building. This is something that we have planned that we're hoping will help reduce the wait time for customers and help to streamline the document submission process for our customers. The next capital asset request is we set aside funding for any kind of software we're going to have to purchase to align with Workday. Hopefully, we'll be able to Hopefully, we'll be able to get something that'll integrate our very complex finance system in with Workday. That wraps it up unless you have any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I appreciate all the information and data. I see reductions anticipated, at least for public assistance, Medi-Cal, and other things on here. I did have some questions about the increase in the, oh, where was it? Oh, in the realignment. One of them, you expect an increase in realignment, another one of your budgets you expect a decrease. Are you just taking the same number you receive from realignment and just appropriating it indifferently, or are you anticipating a specific decrease for what's covered by that budget?
Just moving it around.
Okay, just trying to move the money where it's needed in order to balance that budget?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to check in because I know we've gotten some emails regarding that. On the 5303 appropriation on your 5121, which is your general welfare, I see that your family program is almost doubling. Is that the state has doubled that in the last year or so?
Go ahead, Kelly. We have seen an unexpected uptick in benefits payments out of that budget unit and we are trying to prepare for what we're seeing at the end of this fiscal year continuing into the next. Even though we have been given guidance from the state that caseloads are expected to decrease, they are in fact increasing at a very sharp rate.
So it's due to need, not availability of what's at the state?
Correct.
That's why we're getting reimbursed at a higher. Gotcha, okay. I appreciate that. Which one was it? The, so what is your status for your housing program, your housing authority with all the changes that we've made? Are we going to see that budget slowly disappear as it gets moved over to the regional housing authority?
Nope, we continue operating as usual because we don't want to stop operations. There is a risk of losing funding if we do. So we're going to continue operating as we have until right up to the time when we're passing it to regional. And then there'll be a couple months where they're going through our caseload, getting ready to take everything on, and then they'll just hit the ground running, picking up where we left off.
Okay. And then our 5164, I'm guessing, maybe it's 5165, for all the loans that have been done in the past, we haven't done loans in a very long time. Repayment of loans creates a little bit of a program income if they're repaid.
If they're repaid.
And so I believe I understand some of the status, but I don't believe we've been brought, like, what is the status of all the loans? Where are we at? What is our plan with these loans?
What is our plan?
Is the plan foreclosure? Is the plan forgiveness? Is the plan, like, I just, we haven't been approached with money that has been loaned out, which I think needed to be approved by us probably. I don't know, but I feel like I'm just completely blind as to what's the status and how much money is out there.
Well, we're certainly not applying for more grants because the grants, if available, are not sufficient for administration of the program. It's very unusual to actually get a loan that's paid off because they're 30 years, they are essentially for the life of the individual, they can be passed to, like, a relative that lives with the individual when they pass away. So we don't see a lot of collections on these loans. I don't know how many we currently have, but it is something we're going to need to discuss moving somewhere when the PHA goes to regional to determine where it's the best fit because we're not funded for operating these loans. I believe the program was originally launched by county admin and some of these loans are really old, they're close to 30 years. Kelly knows more, she used to be over this program. Do you have any comments? Just that as the loans do pay off, we only get to keep a percentage to run the program and put back into the administrative burden of, you know, doing all the administrative work. And currently, we maybe have one payoff every couple of years, so we are supplementing the cost of the program with DSS funding, which it becomes more and more difficult. They are also a second to the primary loan, which sometimes creates difficulty in collecting as well.
That's how the program fails.
Yeah.
Thank you. Looking forward to further information.
Any other questions?
I have, just, I just thought it was interesting looking through the budget. And our cost to administer 32.1 million roughly in funds cost us 30, cost about 36 million in our fees.
Well, the funds administered there, I think, are the direct issuances. Kelly, is there more that the state is issuing that is not included? If you're talking about the administrative cost, our administrative-
Administrative cost, about 36 million?
Our administrative cost, the way we are funded through state and federal funding, much of those administrative costs are reimbursed.
Mm-hmm.
By the California Department of Social Services. We do have a rather large department, about 260 folks, so it is, it is quite expensive to run, yes.
Right, and then we, the appropriation summary is about 32 million, so it costs more to administer the aid than it is to, so just, I just thought it was interesting.
Any other questions? I just, I noticed on one of the budget objectives, mentioned SB 43, January 1st, 2026, and just wanted to see, I don't know if you went into depth about it, I think you covered a little bit of it, but if you wanted to just elaborate how prepared we are with-
Sure.
-how much burden it's going to be to us?
Well, it's going to depend heavily on if funding is available or not. That was the goal at the time I wrote the budget and the state and federal budgets continue to evolve. Right now, the mandate is to implement SB 43 effective January 1st, which is a way to include individuals who have substance abuse disorders in treatment and if they're uninterested in being involved in treatment, potentially temporarily conserving them to put them into treatment. It's going to require development of facilities as well as staffing. We would not be developing this facility, just saying we got to find a place to put these folks when they enter into conservatorship, which is always a struggle, currently it's a struggle. So we are looking at, part of the shifting of positions was shifting two positions into our public authority, sorry, public administrator, public guardian branch in order to provide those extra services contingent on funding. If the funding's not there, I'm not sure what we're going to do, but we'll figure something out. We have been working with behavioral health towards launching it, yeah.
All right, thank you for that. I just, I just noticed that it says to, we're continuing to grow and hire to fill vacancies, so I just wanted to make sure that we-
Yeah, we're currently, I think we're one position shy of being full in PAPG. Kelly's nodding. And then we have the two additional positions, we're hoping to fill contingent on funding in time to launch SB 43.
Thank you. Any other questions before I open it up to the public? All right, I will open it up to the public. If you'd like to come up and speak on this presentation of the budget, please come on up. Anyone on Zoom? All right, bring it back to the board. There's anything else? CAO?
Yes, thank you, Chair. In the motion, please include budget unit 5169, the housing home new grant, since it was mentioned, but it's, there is no budget associated with it, but since it was discussed, please include it in the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve budget units 5169, 5011, 5012, 5121, 5125, 5164, 5165, 5168, 5281, 5282.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you for the presentation.
The harshest one in Disneyland is.
All right, welcome back from our break. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next budget presentation from the Agricultural, Agricultural Commissioner Catherine Vanderwall. All right, welcome.
Good morning.
It should be.
Thank you, Board. Catherine Vanderwall, Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. So this morning I'm going to be presenting Budget 2601, 2701, and 2714. So Budget Unit 2601 is the main budget for the Agriculture Department and Weights and Measures. So the department is responsible for ensuring fairness and equity in the marketplace, protecting and promoting agriculture, the public, and the environment through the various programs that we administer. Some of these programs include our insect trapping program, which is critical to our local producers in safeguarding our environment and ag industry. This also allows producers to export their commodities out of state and country. Other programs include overseeing the safe pesticide use, farmers' markets, inspecting incoming plant shipments and agricultural parcels. My department also tests all commercial weighing and measuring devices, and this ensures that the consumer is getting what they are paying for, whether it's filling up at the gas station or buying groceries at the store. There are no significant increases in our budget for 2526. Does your board have any questions for this budget unit?
Very appropriate budget.
All right, I don't see any for that.
Okay. Moving on to Budget Unit 2701, this is, this is the Fish and Game Protection and Propagation Fund. So this budget unit supports projects that improve the habitat for wildlife and fisheries in the county and is funded by a percentage of state fish and wildlife fines, penalties, and forfeitures. So this, my department manages this budget for the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, and the committee receives project ideas from the community and then recommends approved projects to your board for approval. Does your board have any questions?
Yes.
Well, I was just, we haven't heard of any recommendation projects lately. I think the last time was a fishing tournament, so you don't have any?
Not currently. Some of the, you know, more recent projects that were approved by your board include support for the Clear Lake Science Symposium, as well as the carp removal project. The advisory committee did meet, did miss their last meeting because they weren't able to meet quorum. So at their next meeting, they are expecting to have a presentation for a project.
Okay.
Any other questions for this? No, go ahead and continue.
So Budget Unit 2714 is the Biological Community Fund. So this budget unit funds USDA Wildlife Services Program, which provides assistance to the public with nuisance wildlife. This, but, or this uncovers one full-time and one half-time wildlife specialist assigned to Lake County. This program protects public health and safety, reduces livestock depredation, and mitigates property damage caused by wildlife. In 2024, 576 people in the county were assisted with nuisance wildlife. This program is beneficial to the Lake County residents, and I'd like to ask that your board continue to support this program.
What would one do if they had a wildlife situation on their property? Like who do they, who do they reach out to? Your department, they reach out to the biological community? Is there a specific number?
So they, they contact our department, and we actually serve as like an answering service. So we, you know, collect the information and then relay that to either Chris or Devon, depending on the location of the county and where they're assigned to.
Okay. All right, yeah. Go ahead.
So is this funding, does that pay for our trappers then, or the?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you. Go ahead and vouch here.
No, I was just going to comment, I've been involved with several things interfacing with them, and I think it's an important program to have and, and know of other people that have recently had to make those calls. So, thank you.
All right, if there's not anything else, I'll open it up to the public. That's the last one, right?
Correct.
Anyone from the public would like to speak on this presentation? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Budget Units 2601, 2701, 2714.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Probation. All right, next we'll move on to our next budget presentation, Probation Department. All right, and we have Wendy Monfrans coming up. Yes, you just got to speak into it a little more. Oh, yeah, maybe press it. She might have turned it off on you.
Now we got it.
All right, good.
Good morning. The probation department has one budget unit, 2302. And as you know, we're responsible for dealing with all juveniles and adults referred to the justice system, and we're a law enforcement agency that holds people accountable and works on our reentry services to have them have a change of life and a path change. We have removed one DPO position at the request of the administration. We've had struggles over the years with filling all of our positions, though we are doing much better now, and we currently have three open positions and a list of individuals that could fill all of those positions. So we're in a good spot right now with hiring. We have, for the past three years, had a grant with the court of $200,000 a year for doing pretrial services, and currently that is being cut out of the state budget. We don't know yet what's going to happen with that, but that could have an impact on the services we do for pretrial services. We did just receive notice that we received a different grant through, through the courts, called an SCIP grant from the Judicial Council that's funneled through the Lake County Superior Court, and that will be $300,000 a year. Now, the intention of that grant was to work on Prop 63, which is the relinquishment of firearms and, and recovering those firearms from people that aren't supposed to have them, and also the implementation of Prop 36 in the county, but it could also be used for pretrial. So it's going to probably be a wash between those two if the state budget considers down the path it is, and so we're going to have to figure out how to add those Prop 36 services and 63 services into staying compliance with the new grant. And Prop 36, we just don't know. We did attend a press conference last week at the State Capitol to discuss the impacts of Prop 36 and probations. Part of Prop 36 in Lake County, the probation department is the lead agency for Prop 36. We have spearheaded the implementation, and all Prop 36 cases are referred to us for referral and supervision. So currently looking at no funding for that, and we're hoping that the legislature and the governor fix that and that we can have full implementation. Our numbers have been increasing on Prop 36 cases quickly. They started out very slow, no cases at the beginning, but we are seeing several a week, and that will probably increase as law enforcement agencies continue to understand how to charge under it and the district attorney continues to move forward. And we have no control over either of those two entities and how they come into play. We did also receive a CalAim implementation grant for the next year of $1.5 million, and we am, we have been working for the past year and a half, I would say, on getting our staff ready and hiring appropriate positions to work on CalAim, and our plan is to be fully implemented on August 1st, and with that will come hopefully billing and income then should come from that. But we haven't put that in the budget because we're not sure how that's going to play out.
I, I actually had a question. What, when did this uptick in the Prop 36 issues, when did that start coming forward?
Well, Prop 36 was implemented as of the last election, November, and I would say we started really seeing cases the beginning of March, and, and now it's just continued to.
Okay.
Increase.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think that highlights the key things in our budget. Have any other questions?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. Prop 36 unfortunately is most likely not going to get funded in the way that it should be funded. I think they're looking for $350 million. They're only allowing $150, $125 million. Whether they go through the treatment route or the jail route, incarceration route, you're still involved no matter what. Okay. So that, that doesn't split in some way, shape, or form.
And none of those funds that are proposed in the hundred, whatever million they're at right now are allocated for probation. They're, they're allocated for behavioral health. None for the sheriff for incarceration.
And that, that's why I was looking to see if that would help out. And also unfortunately, at this moment in time, most, at least from the numbers I've received, are not taking the treatment route if given the option. That does not seem to be the case, at least statewide.
I, I would not say that's true for us.
That's good.
I, last numbers I pulled were, we had 42 that had availed themselves to an evaluation and treatment, so I was pretty pleased with the number.
Okay. At the last CSAC review that we had of Prop 36, that was not the case.
I know that's especially true in the larger counties. I, I don't know. I think also, Lake County, we have a great teamwork between all of our agencies with behavioral health, probation, the law enforcement, the district attorney. We've been working hard on making sure that individuals know the services are there. Two weeks ago, I did a presentation for all of the attorneys in the county on the services that are available and how we're implementing Prop 36, because not all of the public defenders were aware of what we could do. So I think that also helps too, is the teamwork we have between all of our agencies.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, if there's not any other questions, we'll open it up to the public. None on Zoom? I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Budget Unit 2302.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, that motion carries. Thank you. Five zero. All right, next we have Child Support Services. All right. Good morning.
Tammy Widener, Director, Child Support Services. I am gonna, I have one budget, 2112. My department is responsible for establishing paternity, child support, medical support orders, and enforcing those orders. As circumstances change, the department also modifies child support orders to get right-size orders that are enforceable. The department strives to put children first by helping parents assume responsibility for the economic and social well-being, health, and stability of their children while recognizing the value of improved relationships with both parents. The Department of Child Support Services is federally mandated program that is funded 66% by the federal government and 34% by the state. I do have a couple budget objectives, but regarding the, the capital asset, I will be removing that request. I am not purchasing the car. But I would like to note that the State Department of Child Support Services is managing our technology services now. This change reduced our revenue approximately $48,608. The reduction in our revenue will be covered by eliminating the Information System Analyst 1-2 position. So that's a significant change I made as I removed that position, and now I'm no longer requesting the car.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Supervisor Sabatier? No? Okay. All right, I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to comment on Child Support Services. None on Zoom? All right, here.
Currently, we don't have audio on.
Currently, no audio. All right, well, I'll bring it back. What's that? I didn't hear him. Just one second while we figure out the audio situation. It's working, all right. So let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move, move that we approve Budget Unit 2112.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I do have a question about that motion. Do we need to make an amendment to the capital assets list or leave as is with the statement made?
Was that for the $51,000?
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah. As amended.
All right.
Modify the motion to approve Budget Unit 2112 as amended.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Tammy. All right, next we have, let's see, Mental Health? Behavioral Health?
Thank you, Board. One moment, I'm going to share my screen.
Here we go.
Why isn't it doing it? There we go. All right, good morning. Director Elise Jones, and I'm joined here with our lovely fiscal manager, Ms. Amber Luch. We're pleased to present you our budget. We'll start with 4014, which is our mental health budget. So we are anticipating revenue this coming fiscal year of $39.9 million. As your board is aware, the Department of Healthcare Services has paused payments as they do every year on May 1st. However, we do continue to push up claims, and we anticipate a large number of claims to begin to flow in once they get out of their pause. So that is expected to take place between August and early September. We are intentionally building direct services as much as we can, so our budget over the years, as your board is likely aware, has grown pretty dramatically with CalAim, which is what was supposed to happen. We were supposed to reinvest the realized Medi-Cal revenues back into services, which we have done, and we've dramatically expanded services through that. Again, investment in frontline response and significant investments in our mobile crisis program are coming out of this, and there is certainly no shortage of demand. So we are balancing a tightrope of scaling gradually as much as we can and balancing our revenues. These are just the highlights. Again, the mobile crisis program, we continue to expand to meet county demand. We are also investing in transportation, communication technologies, and other safety tools. For example, our mobile crisis team has an app on their phone where there's literally a panic button on it if something goes awry in the field. So those type of technologies really help us do our job well and keep the community safe. And the public, I think by and large, is receptive to especially that new benefit and a lot of the expanded services. So again, just clarifying that our department budget has grown, and so has our service delivery. As we've previously discussed, the requirement to put upfront our county share of the Medicaid reimbursement through the intergovernmental transfer process. our county's share of the Medicaid reimbursement through the intergovernmental transfer process uh, has created some temporary cash flow issues that we've resolved through a short-term loan. And we do not expect that to continue, uh, after this. Uh, we are continuing to monitor all of our direct service providers and make sure that they're billing at least four and a half hours a day, um, to start with. And, uh, I'm pleased to report one service provider, um, hit a record of billing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one month, which actually is what I expected from the beginning. So it's nice to see that realized, that that staff pays for themselves for the whole year. And then we can begin to continue to reinvest those in things like cars and things that we need. Uh, so it's a strategic approach to use of resources. And this is quite a fun little graph that we've prepared for you. So our budget, as you can see, has risen dramatically. Both revenue and expenditures, and we do anticipate kind of leveling out here hopefully soon as we approach, uh, you know, a fifty million almost. Again, the state payment delays that were, uh, that happened with CalAim payment reform are slowly being resolved. Um, our IGT cash flow situation is being resolved. Um, and I do want to reiterate that despite the pause from the state in processing claims, we submit claims continuously. So, the two million dollar short-term loan that your board approved will, uh, go to offset our cash flow disruptions, uh, due to this state pause in payments. Um, of course, preserve our stability and ensure that we continue to pay our subcontractors in a timely fashion. That's very important. And I also would like to note that that is, um, a real strength of our department in Lake County. I am aware of at least two or three other counties in California that in response to, um, budget constraints such as we have endured, they have suspended contractor payments, which is a clause in the contracts that we may exercise, but it is not a good way to do business. Uh, so that allows us to can, continue uninterrupted service delivery. So, uh, loan payment, uh, repayment to commence late August, uh, within the ninety days. And it is a top priority for our department to restore that two million dollars back to the general fund. Uh, we also want to ensure that we build up our reserves. Unfortunately, as your board is aware, the intergovernmental, the CalAim payment process tapped out our reserves as well as waiting for claims for so long. So, uh, we are, once the loan is paid back, we'll be in a position to allocate between a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, to maybe five hundred thousand per month depending, um, on a reserve for those cash flow issues with the state. That will hopefully circumvent any need for loans in the future. And that concludes my presentation for the mental health budget. I do have a presentation for the SUD budget, but perhaps your board would like to pause or not.
Yes, we have a question right here.
Um, I just have some comments and probably they apply to all of your units, but, um, I just, I want to commend you on expanding the services. We've, we've known for years that this community needed these services. And every contract that you bring before us with an amendment says that the needs were higher than anticipated. And the fact that we're able to deliver on that right now is incredible. So thank you so much because this is in direct, uh, correlation to when you became director.
Thank you.
And this is why we have reserves. This is why we're conservative, why we build in reserves, why you have a plan for reserves, so that we do not have a lapse in coverage for the people that need it most, nor do we lapse in paying our contracts.
All right. Good supervisor Sabatier?
So I'll agree that the extra services are definitely useful for those that need it. Uh, but I do have concerns about some of the increases that I'm seeing here just because until I see the, um, repayments of the loans, it concerns me to continue to expand what's there. So for example, we went from, uh, eight million dollars to now asking for seventeen million dollars for professional and specialized services. We went from, uh, anticipating, uh, nineteen point three million dollars, and I'm going from the actuals, not from the last adopted, uh, to, uh, looking at forty million dollars. And I just don't know that the forty million dollars is a hundred percent to be there. And I'd hate to get ahead and providing those services and then reimbursements being changed at a time where, um, we're not going to be able to capture those dollars. I just, again, I said it last time, I have a very little trust in the state and the feds to care about us and the people we serve versus, uh, making sure that they are secure with what they're doing within their, their finances. I, I get it that there was some, uh, carryover balance, uh, but seeing a higher appropriation than there is anticipated revenue and seeing that the anticipated revenue is believed to be higher, I just, I, I, I don't know that I feel comfortable with those numbers. In September, for the final budget, I'm hoping that it might be a different situation since we have those ninety days will be over by August. And I'm hoping that that will, uh, change how I feel about looking at this budget at this moment in time because what they're doing, uh, within their budgets makes me nervous about the ability for us to carry on as, as we want.
If I may comment, um, Centers for Medicaid, the federal Centers for Medicaid have clarified that the core behavioral health services, including mobile crisis, that fall within that particular waiver, uh, remain intact. And the federal government has no intention of removing those services. So our core mobile crisis, uh, medication management, therapy, um, those all remain intact.
You, you want to continue? I think that was.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, let's see. Uh-oh, I think I did the wrong one. I'm sorry. Very good, okay. Perfect. Okay, so this one maybe feels a little less scary. This is our substance use disorder fund. And I do want to foreshadow, uh, or actually acknowledge that the department, um, now operates under an integrated contract with the Department of Healthcare Services. So we have actually one agreement with the state for both of these budget units. Um, just situational awareness. So we project our revenue, um, at almost twenty-six million. Uh, we project our expenditures at a little over nineteen million. We have a fund balance carryover of five hundred and forty-three thousand. And, uh, our reserves are at seven point three million about, which is mostly opioid settlement funds. Um, so I also want to foreshadow that we will soon be coming before your board for contracts related to the opioid settlement funds. We are pleased to have issued, um, four awards as of this date. And the contracts are, um, being, they're going through the process. But it's a very exciting, especially because one of those is, uh, leveraging behavioral health continuum infrastructure grant monies for our behavioral health campus in Lakeport. Um, so expansion of low-barrier medication-assisted treatment services remains a priority for us. Uh, street outreach, we've heard the community loud and clear, we, they want us to come to them. We're continuing to do that. Lots of naloxone distribution, overdose prevention, infrastructure. These are all tied to the use of those opioid settlement funds. Um, and I'm very pleased with how that is shaping up. This is very exciting. So, um, big shout out to Richie Okino, he really deserves the credit. Some of you are familiar with him in our schools, uh, as well as his counterpart, Daniel. And so they are doing a Friday Night Live chapter, I think we came before the board before. Uh, and so we are continuing to, there's a lot of interest, by the way. Like the districts are very excited about this. So we kind of, I don't want to say we're having a waitlist for Friday Night Live, but kind of, uh, so that is part of our budget and is very exciting. Transitional housing partnership. Uh, so as, um, Chief Probation Officer Wendy Monfrans discussed, we have a really great partnership and we're looking how to build bridges for our justice-involved population who often struggle with, uh, substance use disorder treatment issues. Um, it's important to note that our mobile crisis response is an integrated benefit. So it also serves people with SUD. Uh, if you, I just want to remind everybody, if you feel like you're at risk at relapse or struggling with that, that's a valid reason to call mobile crisis and they will come and help you through that. Um, workforce investment. So we were, we've been recognized actually by the state of California and California Mental Health Services Authority for being a leader in, uh, peer, uh, peer-led services. Uh, so we're going to continue to strategically fund our workforce pipeline, which starts with a volunteer and could end with a director, right? Integration, our, lots of stuff with the electronic health record. Um, that's an ongoing saga for any healthcare agency, but making sure that it is sufficient to meet our needs and allows our clinicians to not work so hard, uh, within the electronic health record. And we have done a lot to try to expand culturally responsive services uh, for tribal and rural communities through this as well. And that is, uh, that's our SUD budget, which again, hopefully feels less scary.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I know you mentioned you're going to bring us some contracts. Uh, will we be able to have a discussion as well? I'm hoping we can have a discussion about the overall opioid settlement. Uh, I know we have new supervisors here. I believe we kind of made some, I, I don't even know that we made decisions, but we got the, um, the plan. I forget what the exact name of it, the expenditure plan, uh, in front of us back in November or December, after that was all done with the community meetings. Uh, wondering if we can take a look at what the, um, uh, projected use of those funds are outside of those four contracts, just to kind of get an idea of, uh, what we're looking at and what we're planning to do. I'm hoping that that will be a part of that if possible.
Yes, thank you. I, uh, am happy to bring back, I would like to, after those contracts, bring an item to the board for a general update after those are executed so the community can see where the dollars are being expended. As well as we have a section of our website that's dedicated to that because we want the public to have great understanding. And of course, uh, any one of you may come to me directly, um, to ask questions.
All right. All right. No other questions? Right, does it cover it at all?
I hope so.
All right, I'll open it up to the public for any comments or questions? Not on Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, a move that we approve budget units forty-fourteen, forty-fifteen, and forty-eighteen.
Question, you said?
I'm asking if, uh, it's possible to separate mental health out?
Sure. Forty-fourteen.
So this is just a vote?
I'll just do.
Forty-fourteen?
Yeah, approve forty-fourteen.
All right.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries four to one.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve budget units forty-fifteen and forty-eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise.
Thank you.
And Amber.
Next is registrar voters. Maria?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, Maria Valadaz, registrar of voters. And, um, I'm here to present the, uh, registrar of voters, um, budget. Our office is responsible for the conducting all federal, state, county, municipal, and local district elections in Lake County while following strict federal and state election laws and regulations. Uh, we're responsible for all components of election management and administration, including voter registration, poll worker recruitment and training, locating and reserving polling places, as well as ballot creation, voting system security, ballot processing, and voter tell, and vote telling. Community outreach and education and candidate services such as candidate filing and campaign finance filing. Uh, we are also, we also oversee petition filings for, uh, any state and local filings with end signature verification. Uh, for this upcoming fiscal year, we have two scheduled, um, elections. The November fourth, twenty-twenty-five consolidated district election, which is just for the Scotts Valley Water Conservation District, where there's two vacancies, um, for two of the divisions. And then the June two, the June twenty-twenty-six statewide direct primary, which is the gubernatorial, will have, um, some state offices as well as some local, uh, offices and two supervisor offices on the ballot. Our budget unit consists of five full-time permanent employees and during election cycles, we, uh, have anywhere between six to ten extra help employees work in the office to assist with the tasks associated in, uh, certifying an election. Uh, we're primarily funded, uh, by the general fund with discretionary revenues limited and limited reimbursement from state and local jurisdictions. And the budget that's being presented, um, I, it's not included and I'd like to ask, um, to do the reclassification of the one position from elections assistant, uh, or elections specialist senior to, um, staff analyst. As I had come back, you know, I'd been here before for two times asking for that. Um, that was not included and, you know, hoping that I could still get that, um, halftime position included in the budget as well. Well, extra help plays a vital role, as I said, you know, it's really hard to hire extra help employees. We currently, um, we're recruiting for an extra help position during the summer. We're a little short-staffed and we have, uh, left messages out for three people and none of which have called us back yet. So we're having a difficult time finding the extra help that, you know, will be on call. So, um, I'd like direction from the board, if possible, to include that in our budget. That concludes my presentation.
All right.
My question?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, your special departments, expansion supplies, you had requested, it looked like a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then we had admin adjustment of two hundred thousand, an additional two hundred thousand.
Well, I, so my initial request was the three-seventy-seven. No, I'm sorry, the three-thirty-nine for that department, for that, um, budget because it pays for the, uh, June election, like the printing of the ballots and the, um, sample ballot booklets and poll worker services, a lot of our services. I think they had initially taken that out and then added it back in.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair?
Uh, yes, my question, uh, first question is, I guess for the admin office is if we did any of those changes, where would that money be able to come from?
Well, we would have to take a look to see if there's any funding available at this time. Um, more appropriately, it would be, uh, final budget, uh, when we know what the carryover is.
Okay, and we don't expect, um, to know what the carryover is until probably the end of August?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, and I did want to comment too, you know, I'm not sure at this point if that's going to be possible from the way I look at it, but I definitely, I know we, you know, we've gotten, uh, you know, a lot of concerns and complaints about the registrar's office not being fast enough, but I want to put it on the record that they are meeting all of their deadlines. They are, they are getting the job done within the law and within the deadlines. And really, that's, that's the bottom line that they have to comply with and they are doing it and they've been doing it with the staff that they have. And, and I think they've, they've done a good job from what I've seen in meeting those deadlines. To ultimately get faster down the road is going to require, you know, changes to that department, additional staffing, things like that. Um, I just, I don't know, I'm not seeing the money right now to be able to, to add the positions based on, you know, our budget being balanced. I think, you know, if we, if we have carryover, that's something that could be looked at, but I don't, I don't see it today. But, um, but I just wanted to comment that they are getting their job done and have been getting the job done in past years.
Supervisor Paeska?
Um, yeah, I agree. I was actually going to say the same thing. I'm not in favor.
I'm not in favor of adding anything new today. We can't take another look at final budget, but we are meeting all of our mandates.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I'm interested in seeing what's possible. I mean, just, I'm looking at one general fund and I'm not picking on it, I'm just using it as an example. In 2021, we said this budget would pay, would expend 1.5 million. They only did 1.2. Next year, 1.6. They only spent 1.2. 2024, they planned to spend 1.6. They spent 1.3. And now we're recommending 2 million. I, I think there's room in some places to find something if we need to find it. It's whether or not we ask for it. In my opinion, there's, there's a lot of possible places to find it. And so, if, if it's the will of the board to look at that opportunity, I think it can be found.
Supervisor Owen.
I think we need to help you do your job, and I know it's really difficult for you to find some part-time help. And the reclassification, I personally don't have a problem with that. I want to support what you're needing to do your job.
Vice Chair.
Sorry, I had one more question. So, if we ultimately did add that permanent part-time position, would that reduce the need for any other of the ongoing extra help, or would that still stay the same?
Well, um.
Different times of the year.
I had increased my extra help part of it to try to recruit more people, but I mean, we could reduce that part of it, some of it, you know, not all of it, but some of it could be reduced on that.
Well, I'm in, in favor of keeping this on the radar to look at as we get the final carryover numbers. But as far as today, I don't, I don't think we can make a decision. I mean, as far as adding without knowing more, more of the finances.
Go ahead, Supervisor Pieska.
Yeah, the only thing I would consider today is a reclassification, but everything else I would need to wait and see.
I'd be okay with that.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. Looks like you have, we have what we need on that, but if there's anyone that would like to comment? No hands on Zoom. All right. I'll bring it back to the board and we have consensus. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, I have consensus.
All right.
Or I don't know if we need to modify with the.
Go ahead, CIO. CAO. I don't know why I said aye.
Yeah, so the position allocation will need to be amended with that position. The position that is currently filled will be vacant or removed upon next vacancy. And then also, the increased cost for that can be amended at, at mid-year.
Okay. I think we're ready then.
Why not in final?
It could be done at final. Either way.
Just curious as to.
CAO.
And one additional thing, looking back at the past four years, not including the current year since we're not done with that yet, there has been about 160 to 200,000 left of her budget, so we could probably move some funds around there within her budget.
The consensus is?
The consensus, I believe, is to modify to add the reclassification request for the one position to reclassify it.
Yeah.
So, that would be the, the only change today.
Right.
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve budget union, unit, budget for, budget unit 1451 with the amendment of authorizing the requested reclassification.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have community development. Maria Turner and Shannon Walker-Smith.
Maria Turner, Community Development Director. Community development has three divisions, building safety, code enforcement, and planning. The vision of our department is to provide superior public service through three priorities, recruitment and retention of staff, professional development of staff, and to pursue fiscal sustainability for code enforcement and planning divisions. I would like to highlight a few of the position allocation requests, and then Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker-Smith will take us through our five budget units. In code enforcement, we have a, a request for a new position, which is program coordinator. This reflects the increase in capacity and programs within our division, including but not limited to hazardous vegetation, as well as management of body cameras and drones. We request three positions of program coordinator with the intent of moving two of our code enforcement officers into this position, as well as moving the current program supervisor into a program coordinator position. Also in code, we've been awarded a CDBG grant, a three-year grant that will fund two positions, one for hazardous vegetation and one for substandard housing. We intend to fill one of these two roles from within, moving a current code enforcement officer into this new grant-funded position, and will hold that position unfilled as we consider the effect that the recently approved MOUs will have on our overall budget. In planning, we have a request for three senior planners. The, the purpose of this is to have three of our, our most experienced planners assist with mentoring the rest of our planning team, as well as to handle the ongoing demand of our more complicated projects, including Lake County 2050 general plan update, as well as what we plan for the upcoming zoning code update, which will be comprehensive to reflect the general plan update. We also have ongoing projects of policy updates for our cultural resources, our ongoing AB-52 consultations, as well as our normal project load. And because I can hear Supervisor Sabatier asking in my head, when are we going to see the body camera policy? That is ready. I will work with the administrative office to get that scheduled on an upcoming board Before I hand it over to Shannon, I wish to express my sincere appreciation to our finance team. They have been working together now for, for about the two years, three years that I've been here with new additions, and every year, they seem more rock-solid and the budget process, which is always crazy, has just gotten smoother and smoother each time. So, I do really express my appreciation to our extra help Gloria Ramirez, as well as our accountant, Juan Daniel Espinoza, and our new accountant tech, Ruby Baker, and especially the, the guidance and input from Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker-Smith. I will turn it over to her to cover our five budget units, and we do also have our finance staff available should the board have questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Thank you. To review budget unit 2602, building and safety, not too much changed between 24, 25, and 25, 26. We are anticipating slight increases in revenue, and we have worked to decrease staffing just a little bit. The main objective of this budget unit this year was to increase reserves in this budget, which we had mostly diminished over the last couple of years, working to kind of stabilize staffing, and now we are working to get money back into reserves for the building budget. We are, you know, looking at our options for anticipating some additional increases in salaries due to the MOUs, and we have a position that we may be able to unfund and likely will unfund at final budget to accommodate for some of those increases. In 2603, code enforcement, there's quite a lot of change in our code enforcement division over the last couple of years. We have continued to diversify our revenue stream with grants. We currently have multiple special programs happening. We have three and a half years left of our Cohort Three grant, which is funding two officers and a CD tech. We have the copter program funded by your Board, and two years remaining on that program. Our illegal dumping, illegal disposal grant funded by CalRecycle has one more year, and we will begin a new grant program through CDBG, which is a mitigation-funded program focused on hazardous vegetation and substandard housing. We plan to post those two positions coming up here quickly and try to get those filled. And so, code continues to grow and diversify in its funding streams. In addition to that, we have our administrative citation program happening, and we're starting to realize some income from that as we process any administration, administrative fines and penalties through a third-party debt collector called Data Ticket. I think that was all for 2603. 2604, the nuisance abatement fund, started with an influx of revenue provided by the Board, I believe, back in like 2019. We continue to work down those funds, and we also have been bringing in some dollars into this budget from the realization of lean payments. And we also now are bringing into this budget any abatement money that's coming to us from grant funds. So, we're kind of, as grant funds are coming in, we're splitting between salaries and services and abatement dollars that are available through those grants. And so, you'll see some increases to this budget, mostly based on that, about splitting in abatement funds that are coming in from other programs. No staff in that budget. It's pretty much purely abatement services that are provided there. 26, sorry, 2702 is the planning budget. As Director Turner mentioned, we mostly have just made a couple of adjustments. We, we defunded the principal planner position, and we've gone to more of a divvied-up management structure with our senior planners, but no big changes in the planning division. We continue to work down the contract with our, with our consultant for the general plan update, and you saw those dollars in ARPA. What's remaining of that project is mostly going to be funded through APGP and ARPA, so we'll, we'll wrap up that project in '26. And finally, the last budget unit, 8475, is the Wildfire Benefit Assessment Zone Project. And there is a budget presented here. One of the four service areas has depleted their funds, and so, we stand poised to serve the other three, but internal discussions are happening between departments about where this funding would be best suited. And that concludes my overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, I wish there was a kind of an anticipated amount for the 2425. It makes it really hard to see. I know we have the actuals for 2324, but not knowing what's happening right now makes it difficult to see if we're seeing a trend. But I know in 2324, in your nuisance abatement, you collected $220,000 in fines, forfeit, and penalties, and then you adopted 2425 at 5,500, and then this year at 25,000. And I just, in, in my opinion, that seems woefully low for the amount of issues we have out there and the trend of we're slowly picking up the data ticket and seeing where that goes. The reason I say that is, well, I, I have some positives and I have some negatives. The positive is, I, I would love to see something added into your special departmental supplies and services. I think that, I just had a good conversation, which I need to bring to you, for potential technology that can hopefully mitigate the amount of illegal dumping that's happening out there. The technology has finally arrived. Actually, it happened about a week before I called, which was great, and I think it's an opportunity to be proactive rather than what you always do, which is not your fault. It's just what we have and how we can do things. We wait for somebody to tell us that somebody dumped somewhere, and then we go and try and deal with it, and eventually, typically when it's in the middle of nowhere, we have to abate it ourselves because it's not on a specific property that somebody takes care of. I, I would love to see us see if we can slide in that proactive versus reactive. It's not a, a waste of money what we're doing, but i, it's not a good management of public funds to continuously clean up after somebody rather than figuring out how to stop it from happening in the future. So, I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to increase that fine forfeit, just because I don't think 220 was an anomaly. I think that we're going to see at least 100,000 or more, and going at 25,000, again, with the amount of nuisance that we have out there, I just don't see the fines being anything less than 100,000, if not more, and I, I can compare it to what I'm seeing in the cities, and they're seeing much larger numbers in the fines, and I know we kind of copied and pasted what they're doing. So, that's one thing that I would like to see. The other one, I, I have a little bit of issues with the position allocation, and I think we said yes, including myself, but it looks like we're up to 17 for code enforcement with three that will be unfunded upon leaving, or am I incorrect? Is that 17 and staying at 17? And I'm, I'm concerned about the long-term sustainability of that. I know that there's been a lot of dipping into general funds to have code enforcement be here. Code enforcement is necessary, but I'm also concerned about the increased use, or is there some balancing act between the abatements, the liens, the fines, that I'm not seeing within the budgets that allows that to carry on? Or did we get special grant funding to be able to afford some of those? Please remind me how that's going, because seeing the number 17, when last year we were at nine, just kind of was a little jarring because that's a big jump. And then for planning, we're dropping from 15 to 14. And what I see, and maybe this is an internal issue that we need to look at, what I see when I ask for a vacancy list from HR is that you're authorized for 22 positions, and so that's not matching for me, and, and I'm worried that we're gonna put in too many positions compared to what's actually been approved. So, I just wanted to bring that up to see if we can look into that, but if you can respond to the code enforcement.
Sure. That was a long list of questions, so you might have to remind me. On the code enforcement out, position allocations, it is that we are preparing for bringing in some new grant-funded officers, and also, it includes some allocations that will be ultimately promotions for staff, and then those positions will become unfunded as they're vacant. So, it's not a true 17. I believe three, four of those will become unfunded at next vacancy. So, there's not really a true increase to code enforcement allocations, except the two new officer positions that we got funded through CDBG.
Okay, that doesn't quite match what I have, but I'll, I'll go with that. And also, having, I, it was proposed, it's here. I, I think it's, in my opinion, too top-heavy. I want to see more code enforcement officers than, not supervisors, but whatever the coordinators. I just, I, I would like to see people out on the street dealing with things, and it feels top-heavy in the way that it's being formed.
To clarify, program coordinators will continue to serve as officers as well. Their, their task on top of their regular caseload is to kind of manage grant or program objectives. We now have four special programs in code enforcement, and that takes somebody's eyeballs and somebody kind of making sure we're always meeting the objectives of our funders. And so, those three coordinators, like as Norman Valdez does now, he continues to provide direct services as a code enforcement officer and oversees programs like AVA and the illegal dumping grant now. We plan to make two more officers in that similar role, where they'll have extra duties of helping us meet grant objectives and keep our eye on data and service provision. To answer your question about, it was your first one, about illegal dumping.
The fines and.
Yeah, and, and fines. The, so the 2324 fine revenue, we're still kind of trying to sort out, so lean payments also come into this budget, and there was a year of a big influx of those. We're still working with admin and auditor's office to kind of get the, the level of detail about which liens were paid out, check those off our list. So it's an unpredictable, it still is a very unpredictable revenue source, as is fines, because we don't have quite yet a year in, into issuing and then receiving payments on fines. So it's difficult to budget on, and we want to be conservative. So that's the reason for that low number. But after we have a good, solid year of issuing fines and payment collection through Data Ticket, I think we'll have a much better sense about what we can regularly rely on in terms of fine revenue coming in. We are scoped to present to your board an update on the illegal disposal grant, and with that, we can have the conversation about next steps, about the next year of that grant, what we want to focus on, and we'd be happy to talk about the technology that is now available. I'm not sure I answered all your questions.
I would just add that with that update on the CalRecycle grant, we will, you'll also see that we're continually looking for other ways to address illegal dumping in a proactive manner, one of which was going out into the neighborhoods and having free dump days, which gathered over a million pounds of trash before it could become illegally dumped. We are definitely receptive to any new technology and ideas that you may have. Thank you.
Supervisor Pieskay.
Yeah, just generally, and some of these more than others, we want CDD to be completely self-funded. And you've been very, you've been very successful with the grants and very aggressive with the grants. I really appreciate that. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate you working to make these, toward that goal of being self-funded. We're not there yet, but I do see progress, and I really appreciate that. And looking forward to also Data Ticket being a piece of that.
All right. I'll open it up to the public. All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Actually, you covered one of my questions, so we're good. All right.
Mr., if there's no further discussion, I'll move to approve budget units 2602, 2603, 2604, 2702, and 8475.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, next we have special districts. Special District Administrator Robin Borey is coming up.
Thank you, Robin.
Help digest some of this.
Thank you.
Multiple.
Thank you.
And Johanna, it was nice enough to make copies of the call that went through.
So, good morning, Board and community. I am Robin Borey, your special district administrator, here to talk about all the different budget units for special districts. We have everything from lighting to water and wastewater throughout the county. So what you will see in our budget, we have nine different streetlight districts from Anderson Springs, Clear Lake Oaks, Clear Lake Keys, Glenhaven, Lassonne, Kelseyville, Lower Lake, Middletown, and Upper Lake. We run four wastewater plants, which touch several districts. There's the northwest plant in North Lakeport, Kelseyville, Middletown, and southeast in Clear Lake. And we have six water districts. Konotehi is a small district. Then there's North Lakeport. There's Spring Valley at the far end of the county, Kelseyville, Finley, and Soda Bay. And so I wanted to talk about not what's getting rolled over. You'll see stuff that gets rolled over in our budget. Makes it hard to understand exactly what our new budget is. So what our current new funding would be is about $24 million, $24.6 million. Later, you guys will see the capital improvement program. We're going to bring back a five-year balanced plan for multiple departments, so that the county will actually have a CIP program. We're proposing in that a new 1.1 million. So we're looking at about $2.8 million, or $25.8 million of new funding. You'll see in the budget where there's grants rolling over, projects rolling over, stuff like that. So that's the difference, and that's why I'm saying it's new money. We have also changed the way we are budgeting, and we have removed a lot of what Mr. Sabatier referred to as fluff. We have taken out a lot of funds that were traditionally used for special projects or if just-in-case kind of money, and brought that down to a more manageable amount. If we run into a big issue, we'll come back either at mid-year or as a special item so that it's much more transparent and we can get a true understanding of where we're going and be more proactive instead of reactive. We are asking for two new FTEs. They're analyst positions to help us with the finance of all of our different districts. We have a lot of new rate studies we need to do, which requires a lot of financial analysis. We are in need of more capital project management on the fiscal side, making sure everything's going through the DIR process, prevailing wage, all that kind of stuff, project accounting. We also are anticipating some heavy lifts when we integrate with Workday. And so I don't know if they'll actually end up being two new full-time employees or if things will get shuffled around and, so you may see it mid-year where we eliminate two positions or one position or something like that as we shift stuff around. In this budget, we did plan a ballpark for salary increases, so we did account for, I believe that Jesse put in 15%, just as a just-in-case holding place. So we will be adjusting that, but the increases that we're just passed won't be such a devastation to our budget because we've already planned for that. We are in the process, we have just hired a CIP manager for our capital projects program. That's going through the process. He has accepted the position, and so he's filled out his paperwork yesterday, and we'll be going through background. And any potential grants, in the past, they had, if they anticipated or had applied for grants, they had budgeted for those. And I am not budgeting for what-if scenarios, so once we, if we get awarded a grant, we will bring that back and accept it and appropriate it accordingly, instead of having what I would consider fake projects in the budget that aren't really funded. And there's several, we have several vacancies throughout the department. We are intentionally holding them vacant due to, we have six seasonal employees doing utility work. And so a lot of our utility, as, you know, we've just had one that just quit like a week and a half ago. We had another one that went to the sheriff's department. So we have some various openings in our utility department, and we're hoping that we're going to be able to fill them with some of the seasonal guys that have taken the initiative to take a part-time job and kind of show us what they know and move forward with that. They've already been through the background process, which is also another cost-saving. So that whole crew is working on what we call INI, but it's, they're doing smoke testing and SL rat stuff where they can check the lines for blockages and manhole inspections and identifying where improvements need to be done. They're finding a lot of cleanouts, property line cleanouts, and other things that aren't capped. So in the wintertime, when things flood, you know, those areas usually have a lot of intrusion since the cap's not on. So they're fixing a lot of that stuff now, which is a big bang for the small price of adding a cap. Our budget units, we have different reserves. So we have operation and maintenance reserves, which industry-wide, we would try and target 50%. Some of our districts are really close to on the verge of not being solvent, so we don't have 50% in all of them, but that would be our goal. And then we have what is called capital, capacity reserves and capital improvement reserves. Some districts treat both of those as kind of the same thing for infrastructure improvements. Others are for just specific, for capacity improvements to increase the flow that can go through a lift station or expanding pipes from, you know, eight inch to 10 inch, those kind of things versus capital improvements are existing infrastructure that has reached the ends of its life or, you know, stuff like that. So like, if we're going to refurbish a lift station, if we're going to replace 30-year-old pipes, stuff that's already existing with more like-to-like versus the capacity increases. So I wanted to touch on, the rest of this is pretty much leveraged on what our existing projects are, where we're at with them, and kind of what we've been working on. The first one is our INI reduction. We have a countywide grant for that. They've been doing, that's where we have the seasonal employees working with full-time employees. We've purchased additional SL rats, so each district will have their own for future line detections. We are looking at getting additional dog bowls there. They look like little, like snow saucers that go inside the manhole. And so then INI can't come through the pickhole or anything. It catches any rainwater or stormwater that would otherwise go into our system. It'll catch in the dog bowl and then not penetrate into our system. And we're doing smoke testing. So they've, they started in like the Nice-Lassonne-Paradise Cove area, toke, Konotoke, and now they're, and they're almost done with Lassonne. They'll be moving over to Upper Lake and Nice and all the way around to North Lakeport. Kelseyville is a pretty well shored-up system, so there will be some spot checking and some routine stuff that needs to be updated. And then we'll be moving to Lower Lake and the incorporate, the county unincorporated area, and then into the city of Clear Lake once that is done. We are asking for an extension on that grant, and we'll have a better idea of how much of that money is actually going to roll over once Jesse comes back and we actually close out the year-end. A new project that you guys will see, which is going to be a mass improvement to operations and our response times and fully understanding what's going on with our system, is to upgrade our SCADA system. Right now, the SCADA systems that we have, if you want to see what's going on at southeast wastewater plant, you literally have to go to the plant. There's one technician that has some accessibility on his phone. But if the superintendent is on vacation, another superintendent wants to check in, they literally have to go to the plant. And that's kind of how it works at all of them. It's, they're not on their own network. They're not accessible remotely. So that is something that we will be looking at doing, and we will not be putting it on the county network due to hacking risks and kind of some of that fear of what could happen. So we'll be creating our own that just does water and wastewater so that all of our operators and our technicians can actually see, oh, well, an alarm went off. Is it a real alarm that they need to respond to, or is it, oh, the communications failed, so it didn't, you know, run its test? And, or if it's a high-wet well, they'll be able to get that area wide and be able to respond in a more proactive way instead of waiting for somebody to call us or on their patrols. Some other projects that we're working on, we're working on our water model and our capacity improvements. We have $100,000 from ARPA, and the engineers have been working on that. We expect that to, we have an ETA from the engineers of fall to winter of 2025 to have the majority of that done, telling us, and that'll tell us, you know, it'll, not only we need to make more water or we need more storage tanks, but if we upsize pipelines and other capital improvement projects to improve our overall system, that's the point of doing these kind of analysis to identify where we're at with our current stuff, what capacity we have for new stuff, and what we could do to improve our existing stuff. On the wastewater side, we have another $100,000 for ARPA. We do have concerns about southeast wastewater plant and the capacity there. That's something that has been identified. During the rainy season, we are exceeding capacity or right at capacity. We're, you know, shoring up as much as we can. We've sealed several lift stations. We have several other ones in the process. We've rerouted some lift stations to alleviate all of the flow going down directly to the lake. So what we could pick up, we've sent through another lift station and to the force main, so trying to adjust the capacities through the system. And that's what these models help us do. They tell us, you know, where there's pinch points, where, you know, if we upside, we add another pump to this lift station, it will increase product, you know, the capacity and that kind of stuff. But we are watching southeast very carefully. We are very concerned that, and we don't want to have to issue a moratorium, but that, just kind of the preliminary information we're kind of hearing, we may run into that. So everybody should be aware. But we do have some capacity increasing projects that we're looking at doing. So on to Kelseyville area, the tertiary treatment, that contract has been awarded, and we're expecting to have a draft of that back this summer for us to review and ask questions in. So we expect that to be finalized sometime by December. The full circle affluent pipeline, that's the earmark money we have from Congressman Thompson. That contract has been awarded, and they expect to have a draft to us this summer. I have discussed it with the Geysers people, and they want to look at the draft as well to see if they see anything, good, bad, or otherwise, before we then put it out for everybody to see. One thing that we do to some other grants and some other information that has come up, we may be looking at another alternative of taking this through the Soda Bay area, depending on what happens with, we have a lot of septic systems out there and some very small water systems that have some issues. So there may be yet another reiteration of the possible pipeline, because if we end up proposing that we're going to tear up that roadway where we might as well put every bit of infrastructure we can into it. There are two remaining redwood tanks in that district that we have grant funding for. They are, they were already previously designed, so they're just updating the front end to make sure that there was no code changes or anything changed in that. And we expect to go to bid hopefully this summer, and we need to have that done by 2026, so. And then live oak drive waterline replacement, that is, the design has been awarded, and we should be out to bid on that this summer. And then this, on to southeast, we've purchased a sewer dump station, all the equipment for that. It's been sitting out there for some time. The engineers are in design of that as they're doing the northwest. We want both of them to operate at the, kind of the same way. So they are working on the design of that, and then we expect to install all of that by the end of this year is our target. One of the capacity increasing things for southeast, we are looking at realigning. We have multiple lines that come into the headworks, and so we have a big pipe and smaller pipes. And so when the big pipe kicks on, it kind of overtakes the smaller pipes and limits the amount of discharge that can come from them, making them back up. And so we are looking at realigning those so that they all can dump into the headworks separately, and so they aren't all dumping into one and then into the headworks, so that each line can come in separately, which will increase capacity and help with some of those surcharges and that kind of stuff. And the next slide is about the Vallejo Lift Station. You guys saw this preliminary when we were looking at the property. Um, and this is another capacity increasing um, thing for Southeast that if we could capture a lot of the flow from across the highway come, it, it all flows down to the lake and then through, you know, bottlenecks through a bunch of areas. So if we put in this lift station on Vallejo, the, it already bisects, our line already bisects the, the lot, so it's a perfect location. Um, and then putting it into a force main directly, and um, that will increase the capacity for the rest of the system. Um, so we expect those properties to close. They're going through the tax sale, not the fast tax sale, the slow tax sale. Um, and so we, the Tax Collector's Office expects those to be done by December. There's some more noticing and stuff, stuff they need to do. Um, and when we put in new lift stations, everybody should know we will put in the odor controls, so. And then the other one is the Highlands um, one that is in lieu of the Alvita upsizing for the Canocte Gardens project. Um, we are um, working on this. We know that this Highlands is also on the repavement list for the city of Clear Lake. So this is nearly designed, and we may have to run out and put in the, the lines um, in the street so that then they could pave over, so we don't have that trench cut moratorium before we actually get to the, the bidding and actual installation of the rest of it. Um, but again, this property is also expected to be done and purchased by the end of December. Um, so one of the projects that's on our list that um, was brought up earlier is the water line um, on Soda Bay to South Main. Um, there's two million dollars in there. It was originally for match funds to run the water all the way down to South Main. Um, the grant funds um, did not materialize, but the two million dollars is still there. Um, there was quite a bit of work done on that project with feasibility and maybe some preliminary environmental and stuff like that. So um, we have gathered all those boxes and sent them to our on-call engineer who is going through and determining what we have, um, kind of coming up with options. You know, if we have two million dollars, what can we do? Can we run the line from Finley down how far? Um, is it just enough for a tank and fire hydrants near the Finley, the Finley well? Because we don't use the Finley well anymore because of the water quality. It's technically potable water, but it's got smell and taste issues, so. So that project is preliminary moving forward, but we'll be coming back for a discussion on how we move forward with that project once we know what we, what our options are, because two million dollars won't get it as far as we need it to go. Um, another ARPA-funded project is the sewage dump station for Northwest. And right now, it's about ninety, ninety-five percent design, and so we expect that to go to construction this summer. Um, and we will piggyback on that with Southeast one at the same time. Um, we are in the process of purchasing the additional property on Grandview, which we intend to get water tanks, more water tanks for North Lakeport. Um, we are looking at funding for two five-hundred gallon additional tanks. Um, it's prudent for us to get two versus one, so you can take one offline for maintenance without um, causing major distribu- uh, distribution issues. Um, so we are actively working on the closing of the property, and um, Yolanda is working on looking for grant funding for those projects. Um, updates on the two, on the three wells, um, we talked about Spring Valley earlier last week. And um, we have a, a remaining amount in Spring Valley of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to upfit that well. So we have sufficient funds, plenty of money to do that. They're working on the spec to do that, and um, we will be doing an informal bid, as it won't exceed our bid um, requirements to do formal. Informal means we solicit five bids from contractors that um, we are aware of, that will work in the county. So we actually get probably better bids when we do informal, because if we do comp- the, the advertise for three, three weeks, um, they may or may not see it and that kind of stuff. And this way, we can actually target people we know that can do the work and are willing to do the work. Um, and then um, they have moved to North Lakeport. They're starting at the water plant to drop that well first. Um, they are, they started drilling today. Um, and then the Crystal Lake Way property, that has um, been closed, and that is all done. Um, the total cost of that was eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. So um, they will move to that site next. Um, we have done site visits and discovered that there is already a well there. So um, we will test that well as well and see um, if we put a pump on it, if that's gonna, if we could just, you know, use it for fire, uh, like a fire hydrant filling station or um, what we could do with that well, but we will be doing a production well as well. Um, and then on to Spring Valley, there, um, Spring Valley, as you know, the rates didn't pass, and so we are financially strapped with Spring Valley. Um, right now, we are choosing between, do we provide water or um, roads at this time? We're hearing a lot of complaints about roads. Um, but we are literally able to provide what we need to for water and hardly anything for roads at this point. Um, we're hoping, once we get the well and some of these other projects done, that then we can revisit where we're at with roads. Um, but doing a new rate study for Spring Valley is quite some time off. So um, we are scrunching down our budget as much as we can to ensure that it stays solvent, to provide potable water to everyone. And um, and doing that, right now, we have a distribution study going on. There's really, really high pressure in some of the areas in Spring Valley due to the topography. And so they, we have funding to figure out pressure zones and um, probably will be installing another tank on already county-owned property that will help equalize the pressure um, and provide additional water storage. Um, right now, before the well goes in, we're running the plant twenty-three hour plus a day to keep up with demand during summer. So, you know, the new well and additional storage and cutting down on some of the pressure will help all of that as well. Um, and then we're working on the construction funding for that. Um, we had funding to do the study, and then it, then we tell them what the options are, and then they look at giving us um, construction funds for that. Um, the Spring Valley Community Center, the parking lot, we just got the approved grant agreement back. So we will, um, we're looking at going, getting that bid either this um, summer, fall for construction in twenty, early twenty twenty-six. Or if we could get it all done, we will get it to bid and construct it this summer. Um, but it's gonna depend on workload and that. Um, but we do have sufficient time to deliver that project. I know that they need it, they need the pavement so that they can use the community center for power shut-offs and um, you know, warming and heating centers and communities, community stuff. So um, it's on our radar and we're moving, it, it's not a big project to design, so um, we're hoping to have that out to bid soon. Um, and then some of the other um, projects that you guys are gonna see, just to give you a highlight, um, we're looking at more smart meter. There's a pilot, we're looking at a pilot program um, to check out new meters that um, work better in our topography. Right now, we have a lot of radio reads that we have to manually go read because the, the signals just can't get out um, and stuff like that, um, new technology that's come out. Um, we do have in the Spring Valley budget as a emergency just-in-case, um, funding for a backup generator. However, we are seeking grant funds for that. Um, we don't really wanna spend all of the district funds on a generator, but if it fails, we have budgeted just in case. Because that is a critical area that we would have to have a backup generator for. Um, right now, the current one is sufficient and working, so, and Yolanda's looking for funding. Um, we're looking at um, security cameras in North Lakeport to help with vandalism and seeing how that goes. Um, we're trying it in North Lakeport first. Um, in Konotehi, we're looking at some tank upgrades and well number two upgrades, as well as resealing the asphalt at tank one. Um, GAC is um, the filter media for North Lakeport. Um, that periodically needs to be replaced, and it's gonna need to be replaced this year. Um, and then in addition to the other projects in Southeast, um, working on the headworks, the, rebuilding the screen and um, some improvements there. Um, there are two projects that are not in our budget that are currently in Public Works, and they're the bridges for Spring Valley, for Upper and Lower Wolf. Um, at some point, we expect that they will be coming back to us, um, but we do have huge cash flow issues with those projects. So we will be working with Caltrans to see if they can advance the funding. They do have programs where they um, advance funding to disadvantaged communities where we can't cash flow it. Um, you know, the grant is fully funding the, the bridges, but the cash flow, last time, we had to borrow money from Southeast, and um, that's not really how we should be doing that. So um, we're looking at advanced funding on those projects so that we can um, move those forward. But they're kind of in transition right now, as um, we're working with Public Works on that. Um, we did get our rate study back, um, and so that will be coming, the award of that will be coming to you guys in July or August. Um, the first things that we're gonna be looking at are user fees. There are um, a lot of fees that, like for plan check for development projects, um, inspection fees. Um, some of those kind of user fees that are more like development-based need to be adjusted and/or do not exist now. So we're going to um, do that first. And then um, we need to look at Lands Inn in Corinthian Bay. Um, both of those are, um, they, we, we spend more on the city of Lakeport contract due to their rates than what these districts are paying, so they are working at a deficit, and so we need to adjust those rates or figure out what we're gonna do with those areas. Um, Lego Sand Southeast is another one that needs to be updated. Um, these plans haven't been updated since two thousand and ten, and um, traditionally, rate studies are done every five years. And so we're significantly behind on some of these. Um, Konotehi is another one that we need to look at doing. And then um, we're also looking at several consolidations. Um, Finley and Kelseyville are technically consolidated piping-wise, um, but they haven't gone through the formality of being consolidated into one district. So we are gonna be working with Lafco on that, um, as well as looking at Corinthian Bay, Lands Inn, um, and Kelseyville consolidating those. Um, and then Clear Lake Oaks and Clear Lake Keys Lighting um, districts. And um, we have applied for two different grants. We were reached out to by the state, some of the, one of the water companies, the small purveyors in the Soda Bay area has been tested for PFOS, and that's the For Ever Plastics that is a water district's worst nightmare. And they are still coming up with how they treat that, how they get that out, what their options are. So we, in our grant application um, for consolidation of the Finley and um, Kelseyville-Soda Bay, we are also adding in the possibility of all of those small districts to-
It's not in Soda Bay, it's in Canocte Bay.
Yes, well, pass, I, yeah, sorry. The, the Buckingham, all the way out to the highway, there's a whole bunch of these very small ones. Um, topography-wise, con- connecting them is a fiscal nightmare, um, as well as them trying to all run on them. So um, we're looking at the feasibility of what if we consolidated all of that into what we would consider Kelseyville, um, into the wa- large um, district, as well as doing the same thing with the septic tanks. That is the primary concern of where people think the PFOS are initially coming from. And um, Soda Bay, there is no sewer out there at all, so that will all-
Soda Bay, Canocte Bay.
Yeah, yeah, Soda Bay, Canocte Bay, walking all the way around, um, and consolidating those. So we have applied for grant funding for that. Um, those kind of projects are the state's number one priority, so we do expect that we will at least get feasibility funding for those. Um, and then, you know, if we do that, then that's when we will look at, you know, is that a prudent place to put the Geyser Pipeline? Um, as it would be taking the Kelseyville affluent, and if we're gonna tear up Soda Bay all the way around to the highway, then um, it might be prudent to put all of our infrastructure in the same, same trenches. And so those are my highlights, and I know we have, you know, twenty-six different units. So I'm guessing you have questions?
Just real quick, um, you mentioned the wells, really good news about the wells in Spring Valley. I wanted to check in and see how that will uh, benefit the actual facility, for, you know, the um, Spring Valley Water Treatment Center. Uh, will, will that help with that, and will it also help with lake recovery? You know, I know that we've been working on lake recovery for a long time as a, you know, secondary backup, basically. Are the wells going to help both of those, or is it something separate?
Um, the wells will definitely heal, help the water plant. Um, if we truly get three hundred gallons a minute as what they're projecting, um, that's more than the water plant makes in, the, the water plant can make a hundred and ninety gallons a minute. So that's a significant improvement in our secondary water source, so we won't need the lake as a secondary water source. And um, it will help with um, you know, electricity costs and, and treatment costs and stuff like that. Um, we won't have to pump as much out and pay Yolo County um, for the water that we pump out and calculate how much we're getting from our, you know, 'cause we have some rights to the water, and so there's calculations that go back and forth on that. But it's usually better to use well water than surface treatment. There's more to it, and um, I would expect the chlorine costs will go down. So I, we're expecting that the operation of the well is gonna be cheaper than operating the water plant, so that will definitely help the district. Um, the lake recovery project, um, the Army Corps originally gave them a maintenance permit long before I came. When I got here, that had, that had evaporated, and they asked for an extension of that, and were told they needed to get a full-blown um, like new construction permit. They couldn't do it under the maintenance permit. And so that has caused a lot of problems. They have identified seven million dollars worth of mitigation credits we would have to purchase, which basically kills the project. And so we have reached out to the Army Corps again to see what our options are. Um, they're not being very responsive. Um, but we are hoping to get a final yay or nay, is this project ever gonna be feasible? So that, you know, because right now, the, the mitigation, to put the lake back away it is, the mitigation credits are just way too much.
And in all of the work and funding and uh, resources put into that lake recovery are just now on hold, and the, the funding that's left over, I mean, it might not even, by the time we get to where we need to, it might not be enough by that time and have to look for other funding sources.
Yeah, correct. Right now, the, what they're saying, um, the funding that we have, there's no way we can do the project. So they're also looking at, well, what if we scale back the project and just do some of, some of the um, like the front pool? Or the, you know, doing just a small for- fraction of it, what that would look like. Um, but it's all contingent on what that permit's gonna be and what they're gonna insist on the mitigation. Because the guy that has the mitigation credits doesn't even wanna sell us to him, sell him to us, because it really kind of, it's one of those bureaucratic things that doesn't really make sense. We're putting a lake back, which is the ultimate wetlands, and um, they want us to buy seven million dollars for the credits.
To, yes, and put another space to make up for the sediment that's already collected in there. Wouldn't it be nice if they would do something like that to the uh, Lake Pillsbury area? I mean, that, I'm just throwing that out there, sorry Lloyd, but I just wanted to highlight that. Anyhow, I'll stop.
Maybe we could do it, maybe we could ask for a new study.
All right. Uh, any other questions? I know that, uh, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yeah, with a couple of questions and comments with the water system in Corinthian Bay, Lands Inn. Those are private systems that we're looking?
Those are wastewater systems.
Okay, not, not the water system, just the wastewater.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're very, very small districts.
Yeah. Regarding the uh, the two million that's been in there for probably ten years, like I believe Supervisor Spotty mentioned earlier, when you mentioned the grant that wasn't funded, are we talking about the, the recent this year collaboration with the city on that congressional request or something else?
There was originally a grant that um, we were ready to ink, uh, two or three administrators ago. Um, and then we got pushed back from the city of Lakeport, so the grant went away. And this two million dollars, from my understanding, was matched for that.
Okay.
And so it's been sitting there ever since. Um, I don't think the city of Lakeport has heard back on that grant proposal.
No, it was in collaboration with the county that they applied. I don't think we've heard anything. I don't really expect that that might be funded this year, but anyway, that's yet to be known. The uh, two positions that you mentioned on increasing, those are already written into the budget. And on, I definitely wanna stay on the, this, because that South Main corridor, there's no fire protection, and it's been going on a long time. We definitely need to figure out a way to get fire- We definitely need to figure out a way to get fire protection hydrants down there, so appreciate that.
Yeah, on fire suppression, so our ordinances clearly state that our districts, our water districts do not provide fire suppression. So that's kind of been a big misnomer throughout the county. Yes, we have fire hydrants everywhere, but we do have capacity issues. So that's why we're, I mean, we're actively looking, can we put in what we call purple pipe fire hydrants, which don't go through the treatment facilities? We have located a well, it's actually at the Soda Bay Water Plant, just right outside the fence. There's a well that they drilled, I don't know how long ago. But we're testing that, and we may be able to put, you know, a small tank there with places for the water tenders to be able to fill up that are outside of our system so that we can start providing, you know, helping with the fire danger around the lake in a more proactive way that doesn't use the treated, the very expensive treated water that, and that kind of stuff. So that's why we're looking at the Findlay Well as well. And there's another well across the street from the Lakeport Water Plant that may be an option as well. And these are already existing things, as well as the one on Crystal Lake Way that we may be able to, you know, yeah, they're not going to go through the water treatment facility, but they may be options for water tenders to fill up. And that's what we're actively looking at.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm aware of the ordinances policies. I just was trying to comment in general, that's, you know, one of the reasons we need water down there because it's an industrial area and there isn't anything. And then lastly, appreciate hearing about the SCADA. I know that we're way behind the times in technology, and that's, I think, a critical step that we need to figure out a way to achieve so that we can, we can actively not have to drive out there every time. You know, because that would delay responses, or it does potentially delay. So I appreciate that being worked on.
Yeah, well, and, you know, and like, there are really good things about if we get like a high wet well and, you know, the lead pump can't keep up, you know, there's ways that we can, you know, manually turn on additional pumps and stuff like that as they're responding. So, yes, we are way far behind the times in trying to come into the new century.
I don't know who's first. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I apologize, but I'm a little bit at a loss and baffled, kind of stopped listening after the, expect the Southeast Plant to be at capacity with potential connection moratorium. And I will die fighting on that hill to not let that happen. What we have is an infrastructure problem that not your doing, not your creation, but that nobody has dealt with. We know that we go from 1.7 million gallons a day during the summer, on average, at least that's what the website says, to 7 million. That is a huge amount of rainwater that infiltrates, or groundwater that infiltrates. We have to make that happen. So you mentioned the, and we've talked quite often about this, about the smoke tests. Are those happening today, or is that being planned to happen? And I don't mean like today, today, but like, is it already actively being done? Or is it set to be done and it's in the future?
The smoke testing, the SL RAT, the putting the caps on, the manhole checks, and some line cleaning is actively happening now. It started in May, and we're going around the lake. And so some stuff that we did before the crew got there, just with our existing staff and some extra help, is they started inside Clear Lake because we know that there's huge IONI issues. They turned around a lift station, they cleaned the lines going through Anderson Marsh, which hadn't been done in a very, very long time. They thought they needed state permits, or I don't know what was, but anyway, they cleaned that. And we had no spills in that whole area with the wet weather. So obviously, a lot of infrastructure needs to be fixed. They did find a trailer park that had burned down, and no cutting and capping of their laterals was done. So there was huge infiltration there. So they have cut and capped all of that, so should help on that. And then on 36th Avenue, we did cut and cap those 11 connections that were pouring in water. So as we find these kind of egregious areas, we are fixing them first. But they, you know, due to timing and what was going on, we started in, we technically started in EJ's area, then we were moving to Brad's, hitting some pieces of Kelseyville. Kelseyville has been very, very, that area has been very good about staying up on their line cleaning and that kind of stuff. And then moving to the Lower Lake unincorporated area, and then inside the City of Clear Lake. Something else we're looking at, which you're aware of, is identifying where there are septic systems within our district. And/or are there people that have improved property that are not paying, i.e. they don't, we don't send them a sewer bill? So we have gotten a map, a tentative map, that we're going through to identify. We started in your area since it was a request. It is something that we need to do for the LAFCO study, because they're going to work on MSRs, the Municipal Service Reviews. So they're going to, we're going to do it all the way around the lake. And we have found a significant amount of property that are not in our billing system, but are improved properties according to like Google and looking at them. So we are going to go out and do facility checks.
Okay. The capacity expansion fee, when somebody pays into it, that goes into a special account that can only be used for not just maintenance, but expansion of the pipelines throughout the system, as well as the expansion of the sewer pond if needed to be able to capture more.
Sewer ponds, lift station capacity increases. So we could use it on Valeo, which will, you know, increase the rest of the capacity in the other areas because we'll be pulling that much flow off of the other lift stations. Headwork improvements that will increase how much can go through the headworks at once. Those kind of, anything that we can increase the capacity for, we can use capacity fees for. So if we go from an eight-inch line to a 12-inch line, that's a capacity-increasing project.
Right. And so all I see on here is an actual from 2324 of 1,120, or 1,128,000. That sounds like one of the housing projects that occurred. I know both of them were approximately a million or over a million for each one, so I'm not sure if it was paid earlier or not. I'm going to request outside of this, just to get an accounting of all the capacity studies, just because I'm curious as to why there's such a small amount based on the amount of construction or upgrade that I've seen occur there. I just want to check in on that. And then it was adopted last year for only 13, and didn't really, I guess, recognize that, but that's one. And here, you are projecting zero, which means that you are literally expecting a moratorium or no construction whatsoever. And that concerns me gravely, because we have to have economic development. Economic development requires the building of houses, and this has the potential to create bad things. I also want to go to, in the capital asset-
Can I stop you so we can?
Please.
So the capacity fees, we traditionally budget those very, very, very conservatively just because we don't know when something's going to come in. We did just get the capacity study back for the 18th Avenue Apartments. And so we'll be adjusting that amount in the final budget, because now we know what their impacts would be. We will also hear from the developer if it's going to make or break their project as well. So once we know those kind of things, then we will budget those. But traditionally, they have been very, very conservative because there hasn't been a lot of connections going on. There's a lot of, yeah, we want to do a bunch of stuff, but until they actually pull the permit and actually pay us, we're not seeing that. And in your district, there's been a lot of connections or wishful for connections that aren't coming to fruition.
Building houses is difficult, unfortunately. And then the, in the capital asset list, Lake Coast Sand Southeast Infiltration and Inflow Reduction, again, not your doing, but that's been on this list for years. I would love to see the entirety of that spent and gone and used to decrease the amount of winter weather inflow that goes into the pond. Because then that reduce, instead of building for the capacity, we need to reduce of what's going on. And so what is your timeline for potentially utilizing those funds that have been there for longer than your time and longer than your predecessor as well?
Yeah, so that's what are, why we hired the extra help crew, so that they can go out and help identify where this stuff needs to happen. They're also working on some slip lining contracts now, so that they can line some of those pipes that have been identified as where infiltration is. We're finding that there's a lot of grease that's going into the system that isn't really IONI, but it's causing system issues. So our C-MOM is actually working on that with the restaurants and the grease trap, people that have grease traps and stuff, which is outside of that, but it still impacts the system. You know, if the pipe is half-full of grease, then, you know, obviously, we lose capacity. And so we have a bunch of lift stations that they've identified that need to be, they pull everything out and they seal them and then put everything back in. They've identified several in the Southeast area that water is literally just pouring in. One of them, they've done, they've got a couple more that they're working on the bids to go do that. That's not something staff can do. And then the dog bowls, putting those in, a big portion of Southeast has been done, but the rest of the county hasn't been. And so it's a global, all the way around the county, and it's just old infrastructure. And we are looking at what we can do proactively to do the most reduction for the lowest cost kind of stuff. So, yes, we are asking, and we are asking for an extension on that funding, because it goes puff at the end of this year, and we're going to ask for an extension.
Okay, I have two more things. One, here it says utility relocation and adjustment City of Clear Lake road projects for $83,000. Not forcing you, but just in case it does end up with an agreement. I know you have a current bill, I want to make sure to add that in there, just so that it's available for you to pay. Because right now, that would not cover what's there. And so just want to make sure that you're able to fulfill.
Yes, so-
I'd like to increase that to 250 if possible.
Well, the current bills that we're talking about are going through the outside meetings that we have on that. The money that we've got in the new CIP was based on what they were proposing for their projects. So when we reach agreement on all the other stuff, that will come back as a separate item. Because currently, that money is not budgeted.
And that's what I'm asking to do. That way, we don't have to come back and redo the budget and do anything like that. It's just available if it's needed. That's my request. And the last one is, I know you borrowed $1 million from Southeast, was it $2 million? Is that, is that what you're asking for, an extension to go further? Because I thought that got paid back.
That was to cash flow the Cash Creek Bridge. And it's my understanding, well, I don't know if they've actually made all the transfers and everything, but it's-
Because I just don't see it on the budget itself for-
There should be, there should be an in and out in there somewhere. But Jesse is aware in that that loan is until the end of this year. And Jesse took an extra week off, so he'll be back July 7th.
So I know that I saw it very specifically for behavioral health and others where there was loans and loan repayments. I just don't see it here, so I'm going to look to see if I can get an answer to that, because I don't see it.
And I know that we have it, I just don't know exactly where it is, but I will, I will find out and get back to you.
Thank you.
But yes, loan being paid back, because we need it for Southeast infrastructure badly. Did we just say that at the same time?
We did.
Yes. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I'll make mine quick. Just looking at the, all the CSAs and the lighting districts and the impact of the utility costs and how that's a really burden, burdensome amount and can't really continue at this rate. So I just want to say that I'm encouraged that we're going to be having the conversations with Sonoma Clean Power to hopefully lower that burden and keep those districts solvent.
Yeah, and that's one of the things when we need to look about, you know, can we, because they're all on the tax roll. So, you know, it's not just a go change your rate, it's a different process. Consolidation will help with some of that. But yes, the, and we may need to, maybe we don't turn the streetlights on from dusted on. And, you know, maybe they're on till midnight, or, you know, some districts may have, you know, some kind of restrictions like that that we need to do. I believe that most of them have all been changed to LED.
And we've done all of that.
So there's no like low-hanging fruit to-
Right.
Yeah, but-
Thank you.
And solar is coming along much faster. When they first came out with the solar streetlights, they were, they worked for an hour, they didn't work very well, but. So that may be something else is, you know, they get hit or whatever, we changed to those as well.
Lots of conversations to have this year, because we cannot continue like this. We just won't have these districts.
Yeah, they're, we're, they're becoming insolvent.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions, I'll open it up to the public. Margot? All right, if you can unmute.
Good morning, Board, Margot Cambara. I have two questions and a comment. First question is, how is special districts keeping its computer systems safe from hacking and other cyber attacks such as ransom demands? The second question is, is special districts cybersecurity up to industry standards? And my comment is, if special districts cybersecurity isn't sufficient, then protecting the system may require budget commitment. And one option to consider, and I'm not saying it's the best option, is to move the, move special districts under the county's cybersecurity umbrella, assuming that the county's cybersecurity is up to industry standards. Thank you.
So all of those items will be looked at when we do the SCADA project. Currently, the SCADA is not on the network, so there is no cybersecurity hacking ability because it's not hooked to the internet. We will be looking at creating their own network for SCADA alone, so it won't be on what would everybody considers the main IT servers. It will be on a standalone system. It will meet standard industry cybersecurity, we will build all of that in. This is, you know, the SCADA is something that is used industry-wide, worldwide. And so there is a way, there are ways to make sure that it stays secure, but we will keep it separate from the county. So if somebody hacked into our system, they won't be able to get into, you know, the rest of the county. And then for ransoms and stuff like that, the primary thing to do is to have redundant systems and make sure that if somebody locks up your system, that you have backups and everything necessary to shut that one off and turn on another one and avert the ransom.
All right, is there anyone else on Zoom? All right, I'll close, public input, Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just want to repeat that I'd like to make that amendment to the capital asset list. Right now, it says $83,000, that's for this year's project. The bill currently that is in discussion is 216, so I think $300,000 would at least cover both if that was a necessary thing. That way, we don't have to come back.
All right.
So I move to, if there's nothing further, approve 8210 through 8219, 8461, 8351 through 8456, 84, and I'm sorry, with 8354 amended for capital asset. Then 8460, 8462, 8466, 8473, 8480, 8481, 8593, 8695, as proposed.
Second is-
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, Robin. All right.
You guys going to break for lunch?
That's what I'm just going to figure out. Should we break or do one more?
If we do one more, I need a break, so we may as well just take a break.
Just take it from here?
Take lunch.
Yeah, we'll start, we'll take lunch from here, 12:15, and we'll come back at 1:15. Yeah?